Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order tonight on September 6th. And we're gonna go ahead and have our flag salute by Commissioner Bob Hegel.
Please rise. Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And roll call, Denise.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Chair Turley Trejo.
Here. Thank you. Okay, before I start, are there any public comments on the consent calendar?
We have not received any.
Okay. So, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received and still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Okay, so we just have two items on the consent calendar. The first one is our minutes from our meeting of July 19th, just a while ago. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
In a second. Okay, so we have a motion by Bob Hegel and a second by Fernando Solis. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I was absent, but I did watch the video back, so I will vote aye in favor.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Honorable Chair, if we could just clarify for the record, I know we asked about whether or not there were any comment cards on the consent calendar. The answer was no. If we can just clarify if there were any public comment cards in general for items not on the agenda.
Okay. So, any public comments on items not on the agenda, on the agendas items?
We have none.
Okay, good. Good clarification. All right, thank you. Thanks, Maricela. All right, and then we have a director's hearing summary report that is a file, receive and file. So, we will go ahead to our public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project or projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For a public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right, we, item number three, we will start with planning application number PA23-0260, a plan development overlay amendment to adjust the boundaries of three existing planning areas and the creation of two new sub-areas within Planning Area 1. The project does not propose any development within the Linfield Christian School Plan Development Overlay District. Scott, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, this is PA23-0260, which is the Linfield Christian School Plan Overlay Amendment. So, it is a plan development overlay amendment to adjust the boundaries for three existing planning areas and the creation of two new sub-areas within existing planning area, which is PA1. So, as stated, this no new development or land uses are proposed as part of this amendment. So, basically, anything could have been submitted, reviewed, and approved six months ago that could have been reviewed, submitted, and approved six months from now. There's nothing, no land use changes, there's no buildings being proposed. We do understand that there were, in addition to the city's public notice that gets sent out to a 600-foot radius around the project site, that a couple residents created their own notice and those were placed on the doors of residents in the neighboring community. So, we just want to be clear that the city's notices get placed in mailboxes. And again, so there's no developments associated with this project. So, the existing Linfield Christian School campus is located at 31950 Pabba Road, as you can see in the red above. So, a little bit of background, on September 16th, 2003, the Linfield Christian School Plan Development Overlay was approved by the city council. So, what this amendment is doing is Planning Area 3A is being reduced from 15.58 acres to 7.36 acres, and Planning Area 3B is being reduced from 12.42 acres to 5.82 acres. That results in 14.82 areas of reduction. The two new planning areas that are being created is Planning Area 1C, which is 5.43 acres, and Planning Area 1D, which is 9.39 acres. As you can see, that totals the 14.2 acres that's being removed from planning areas 3A and 3B. So, those new planning areas, 1C and 1D, will be retained as part of the main campus area for future educational athletic programs, as well as retaining the senior housing as a potential land use opportunity. And we'll explain a little bit more of that here in a minute. So, these are the existing planning areas as it exists in the Plan Development Overlay. These are the proposed planning areas in the Plan Development Overlay. So, planning areas that will remain unchanged are Planning Areas 1B and 2. The planning area with the exact same acreage but reconfigured is Planning Area 1A, which houses the main Linfield campus. Planning areas acreage that are reduced and reconfigured are Planning Area 3A and 3B, which are Long Rancho Vista Road. And the new planning areas, 1C and 1D, are for you in the orange color. So, the proposed amendment will create a more practical and developable parcel configuration for planning areas 3A and 3B. So, again, if you look at planning areas 3A on the left and then 3A on the right, you can see how it kind of squares off the developable area, less odd ins and outs of the lot lines. And then also on 3B, it squares it off to be more practicable and developable. So, a big part of this is no net loss. And what is no net loss? So, a city cannot change zoning of parcels where housing is allowable use to a less intensive use, including eliminating ability to develop housing, including senior housing, without replacing that loss of area somewhere else within the city. So, currently, senior housing is a conditionally permitted use in Planning Area 3, and it's not permitted in Planning Area 1. So, the amendment as proposed will result in a reduction of residential capacity in Planning Area 3 by 14.82 acres. So, the city would be eliminating 14.82 acres of land in the city that could be developed for residential. To combat that, those 14.82 acres are being added into Planning Area 1 and sub-areas 1C and 1D for senior housing with a conditional use permit. So, all the housing capacity that's lost from Planning Area 3 has been added to Planning Area 1, so there's no loss of residential capacity for senior housing in the city. So, how does that look in the land use table? So, you can see the strike through red underline in the first table adds in 1C and 1D and adds in residential senior housing as a conditionally allowed use. And you can see also in 3A and 3B, it remains as a conditionally allowed use. And then at the bottom of the table, it just states senior housing is allowed in PA1C and 1D of Planning Area 1. Terms of environmental, there are two CQ categorical exemptions, which is 15061B3, as there's no possibility the proposed project would have a significant impact on the environment, and Section 15305, which is a Class 5 for minor alterations and land use limitations. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Planning Commission Resolution recommending city council approval of the project. That concludes my staff report. I'm here for questions, and the Linfield School representatives are here as well.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, I'll go ahead with my colleagues with questions.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. So, just a couple of questions. I know you mentioned there's no proposed development with this particular hearing tonight. Is there any kind of grading or any kind of change on anything that would be physically seen on the site?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And then just the zoning changes for the ones you put back? Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
The areas that would allow senior housing, would it allow any other housing other than senior housing?
The only other housing that is allowed is if it's associated with the school, so like student dorms, but it's a high school, or faculty housing.
What was, what generated this change? What was the purpose of it?
I'll leave that up to the applicant.
Mr. Solis?
I had two questions. One question was, so can you go back to that chart that allowed, that showed the permitted uses, please? So, before in the areas that weren't being changed, well, the proposed areas, now it is allowing for senior housing in those locations, but with a conditional use permit?
Correct. In the new areas of 1C and 1D, which we're currently in Planning Area 3, it allows the senior housing with a conditional use permit. So, no new acreage is being added that allows for the senior housing. It remains exactly as it does today.
Can you go back to the map, then? Okay. I understand. And my other question, I think that was it?
Gary.
That's the same question as Bob. Wait for the applicant.
Okay. The only question I had was on the table where it says educational institution. That's a conditional use permit on that? On Area 1A? It's, it's on the previous?
On the full table?
Yeah.
I actually do happen to have that. So, this shows all the land uses that are allowed, so correct. Under educational institution can be a conditional use permit in all zones. Again, not something that was changed as this, could have been developed years ago.
Yeah, that's interesting. Okay. I was just curious about that. Okay. And then my other questions were answered. Okay, any other questions of staff before me? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, so anything on any of those piece, particularly pieces of property would require a conditional use permit?
Any senior housing would.
Anything, so?
Right, Mike, if you put back up the slide that's up.
So, if you did a sports field, that would not?
So, sports field, sports and recreation facilities would be a permitted use.
Okay. If it was a, say, a gymnasium, some kind of a building, that?
That would be a sports and recreation facility.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, can we invite the applicant up, please?
And if we could open the public hearing?
Yes. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and it's Deanna Eliano. Okay, welcome. Make sure the, the mic is on. There's a little button, should be a little button there. Here?
I think it's on.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and we appreciate your consideration of the school's requests for the PDO amendment. I think, based on what you've seen from the presentation by Scott, who, by the way, has done a wonderful job in helping us in putting our requests before you, it's fairly straightforward in terms of what we're doing. We're just trying to reduce the land area. And so, I think some of the questions you're having is why? Why are we coming before you at this time? There may have been a couple of you, I think Madam Chair and others, that were on the commission a few years ago. When we came forward with in Planning Area 3A and 3B, there was a larger, a fairly large senior project called The Generations, which was assisted living and other cottage-type senior uses. That was approved by the commission and by the city council. However, due to some financial considerations on the part of the applicant, the developer of the project, they were not able to move forward. We were disappointed at the time, but it actually opened up an opportunity for us in that we started looking at our land area again and really looking at our boundaries of our main campus and what we wanted to accomplish as a school. And fortunately, in the last few years, we, Linfield has been very blessed to be able to have full enrollment. We actually have waiting lists. And so, we're really focused on, on trying to improve our programs and our athletic opportunities and classroom space, and, and we need more additional, or to retain additional land area to do that. So, that's why we're shrinking down 3A and 3B to a much, you know, smaller, a reduction of 15 acres land area and increasing Planning Area 1A. It's confusing, I know, to us and to others as to why senior housing is still, is now included as a use within Planning Area, the new planning areas, 1C and 1D, but that was, it's not our intention as the school to develop senior housing in those areas. It is compliance with state law in terms of the no net losses, as was explained. We do have Planning Area 3A and 3B that is potentially available for a development, but any new development would require a conditional use permit, would come before this body, have environmental review, and would have to be consistent with the PDO and with the general plan public institutional uses. So, as a school, we would only entertain uses that we think are going to be compatible with our students and, and with our operation. That's our primary motivation, is that we continue to have a vital, vibrant school community on our property. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. By the way, I'm on the Linfield Board of Trustees. There's another board member here, Ken Crawford, as well as Mark Horton, who's our head of school for Linfield Schools.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information. Any questions? Deanna? Anybody here? No questions? Okay, yeah. Really good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have some requests to speak at this time on this item. So, I will go ahead and read the name and read the name coming after so that you can be ready to come up. And we'll start with Bob Rainey, to be followed by Ed Hugler.
Good evening. As far as the development goes, I'm out of luck on 3A and B, no matter if you stay with what you have now or if you change it. My property butts right up against the fence to Linfield, and the idea of one day walking out and seeing a possible four-story, pinkish stucco tan-colored building out my backyard is distressing. When I bought that piece of property twenty, over 20 years ago, and I built my house, the research we did was that the property was to remain primarily for the school function, for either athletics or campuses or something like that, and to suddenly change it because it makes it better to develop out of whole cloth, or taking these acres here, putting them over here because it's easier to develop, just does not seem in the community interest to me. I'd like to ask, what is the benefit to the community of making this change? Like I said, it's, I'm out of luck no matter what if they go ahead and grant a conditional use permit down the line, but that's looking out of my backyard, and that's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Ed Hugler or Hubler? Did I say that wrong? Sorry. How do you pronounce your last name?
Hubler.
Hubler, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I've lived in Temecula for over 36 years before Temecula became a city, and I've lived on Green Tree Road for 26 years. My son went to Linfield over 30 years ago. When he was a student, the teachers, administrators, staff were excellent. They cared about people, the surrounding community. Now, it seems the school's administrative staff and board of directors are the worst. It appears that people running Linfield School could care less about you and your privacy as long as they get their way and do what they want. They all claim to be Christians, but they are not respectful of anyone. They do not teach kindness and respect for other people. They only teach greed by their actions. They have lost what being a Christian is all about. It is all about them and screw everyone else. I looked for the Linfield teacher that was recently fired for disparaging Asians with her hateful language. Linfield Christian School has more of a corporate-for-profit greed attitude than any religious establishment that I've known in 76 years. What is Linfield hiding that they want to change the boundaries? A notice of public hearing stated that the project does not propose any development within a Linfield School Plan Development Overlay District. If that's the case, why change the boundaries? I sent an email to Linfield five days ago asking about the boundary changes with no response. Rumor has it that Linfield is in discussions and has been in discussions with a developer for some time. It seems that the developer wants to build high-density, low-income housing. That's why they want to change the boundaries. That development, if the boundaries are changed, could end up like the development on Rancho California Road in Yonex, where the residents did not have a say in what's going on there, and neither did the city of Temecula. It was the state of California that approved that. What is it that the Linfield Board of Directors understand? In 1968, the land was donated to build a Christian school and not apartment buildings. I vote, I say vote no on the proposed boundary changes to protect our homes, neighborhoods, and community. Home is where the heart is. Feeling safe and supported by a home is a critical part of what it means to be a warm, loving human, and a sense of belonging is often central to our identity. So, I say vote no on the boundary changes.
Thank you, Ed. Next, we have Robert DiNofrio, followed by Dorothy Wilson. Did I say your last name right?
DiNofrio, yes.
DiNofrio.
Yes. I have a Boston accent, but I've been a resident of Temecula for over 25 years, and I've lived off of, on Perseo Galata, which is just adjacent to the parcel, what is it, 3A and 3B? I'm still a little bit confused, though, on the reasoning why they're separating the parcels the way they are, but I can tell you that, you know, A and B butts right up to, you know, Rancho Vista, and as I said, I've lived there for, for 25 years, and, and I have trouble getting on and off my street in the morning and in the afternoon, because obviously, we have the high school, which is right on Rancho Vista. We have the ball, we have the stadium, and additional two more schools. So, to develop that area and bring on potentially more traffic to Rancho Vista doesn't seem feasible to me. And that's why I feel, feel strongly that that, that area should not be developed. I, I was thinking that there'd be a rendering and that there was a developer and we knew what was going there, but we don't know, so those are all unknown questions. But I can say that, you know, the entrance to these parcels, if it is off of Rancho Vista, there's enough traffic now, then there needs to be, and we don't need any additional traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. And Dorothy Wilson, followed by Maureen Dresch.
I would just like to state that I've lived in my home that's adjacent to the Linfield property for 22 years, and I still don't really understand the ace, the 1C, 1D parcels and the verbiage that says it was done to be more practicable and developable. And my, I guess my real question is, what does Linfield really want to do? And could they have done what they want to do without changing these boundaries?
We can't answer you right here. You're, we can have staff talk to you later about that, but we can't speak with you here.
Okay, who should I contact, then?
Scott? Have you contacted Scott Cooper on that specific question?
Yeah, and the applicant may, the applicant is going to have an opportunity to rebut, so the applicant may address that during the rebuttal.
Okay, because that's the part I really don't understand.
Oh, understood, yes. So, just to be clear, this is public comment, and so you provide comments, but it's not like a question-answer period. But staff is writing down notes of what your questions are, and generally, those are either addressed by the applicant or staff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. And Maureen Dresch?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. In March, I will have lived in Temecula and owned property for 50 years. When I bought my house in 1990, the property you're looking at was supposed to be a golf course. Now, we're looking at this group deciding what our lives are going to be like now. That Linfield has decided they would like to do something that would net more money. We've all seen all the changes made here in this city. Some have been great, others have caused congested roads, frustrated people, and this project, if you allow Linfield, I feel like there's deception involved, and I'm not saying that you guys are part of it, but it feels like deception. It feels like they're switching things around to try to maximize the amount of money they'll make, mostly from state and federal governments. That's easy money for them. If you approve what they're trying to do, all of us who live on the perimeter of that project are going to lose a lot of money. Our property values are going to go down. We're going to have, I would say, I, I don't think I'm exaggerating, I think that's probably one of the very last pieces of open land in the central part of Temecula. That land has been untouched for decades, and you have environmental reports that tell you that there's not going to be any environmental damage, but you're not taking into consideration all the wildlife that lives on that land. And I'm not, I, I understand that everybody's in it to make money, but there are other things to think about. Our quality of life matters. Our quality of life matters. Our own personal ability to retain our property value, that matters. So I, I hope that you won't just be lured away by the promise of added tax dollars or whatever else, but actually give some thought to quality of life for those of us that have lived here for so long. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, do we have any other public comments at this time?
We have none.
Was there anybody out there that still wanted to speak? Okay, come on up. Just make sure that you fill out a speaker form. You get down and give that to our secretary there, please. And what is your name?
Teresa McDonald.
Teresa McDonald?
Yes. So, I live, my backyard's on Rancho Vista. I have an incredible view of Mount Palomar. My great-grandparents were pioneers of Temecula, Alfred and Frida Knott. We're the Vale Rail family, Dominigodee, all that. So to see, and like, I get up every morning, I look at Mount Palomar, and I love my childhood and present-day memories because I like to hike up there, too. Depending on the structures, that may all go away. Right now, I hear little fender benders from the high schoolers. And that's a shame because no one wants anybody to get hurt. But you add to traffic, and it's going to be scary. And I don't want anybody to get hurt in our, our cute little town that has mushroomed. I mean, I grew up, you know, coming here. And it's certainly a different town. But I ask that you really, I echo the previous speaker, is pay attention to our quality of life. And it's going to go away, it's going to change so dramatically. And I, I would really like it if you'd be mindful of that. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
And where do I fill out the whatever?
And there was another gentleman that wanted to speak? Do I see another hand? Okay. Come on up.
I'm Lisa Zachary. We moved here from Ohio about a year and a half ago. This town is gorgeous, love this town. And I heard this development was going to go up. And the beauty of this town is the parks. And, I mean, we, we were so, the minute we came here, we're like, oh my God, this is such a cool California town. And you just, I mean, you can develop whatever you want, but you, if you, we live really close to this area, and you can't, I don't know who's done their, their traffic study, but I can't imagine that that would go through with the high school. You can't pull out of the subdivision at certain times of the day. And it's not even just because of the school, and that's, the, the road go, is fifty miles an hour, I believe, in that if, if anything, it's extremely dangerous. I can't imagine that this could be going through and even adding more traffic to this area. But anyway, if I was Temecula, I would buy the area and make it a small park, or just keep it as a view, as so many people have said. It's not, you just can't always, you can't get that back. And it's, it's a beautiful town, and it's, it's just such an honor to live here, and nice meeting you guys. But thank you, that's all I have to say. But, but really think about long-term. Because it's not even property values or anything like that. It's like you just, it's just, it's just such a beautiful town, and, and once you just start developing every single inch of it, there you have it. And for what? I don't know if the school, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's a great school because we haven't had kids go through here, but, but if it's just for profit all the time, think of the long-term. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, we need you to fill out a form. Anyone else that would like to speak? Last chance? Anyone? Okay. Before I close the public hearing.
We are going, so before we close, two things. One, for the record, we also received a letter from Linda Kosky that was distributed to the planning commission, so that is also part of the record. In addition, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut, so she should be welcomed back to the podium.
Okay. And we'll do that first before having staff answer any questions, correct? Or does it matter?
However you want to do that is fine.
Okay, we'll have the applicant come up first and answer any of the questions that people have had.
And also just anything else that you'd like to share with the commission. This is your opportunity to provide that feedback.
Thank you very much. First of all, I, I guess, one of the main things we want to reiterate to all of our neighbors is that Linfield wants to be a good neighbor. We feel like we have been a good neighbor and a good part of the community for many, many years. We've, we're first established in the nineteen seventies. We went through our master planning effort in the early two thousands when the PDO was adopted, and we've adhered to, to that the entire time. So we are very concerned and want to be able to address any concerns that the community may have as we move forward with our plans. In terms of what are we planning, it's, it's pretty much as I had reiterated to you before, we're, we're doing our own internal relook at the campus and wanting to see where we can expand our athletic facilities and our educational facilities. Also, parking is a need. And there's some of those areas, as we look at that, that bump up against what was this three A, three B boundary. So our understanding and working with the city is, in order for us to provide our campus facilities, we need to move that boundary and move that boundary in terms of the lot line adjustment as well. And in doing that, it's our desire to shrink the area of three A and three B by fifteen acres. We think that's a benefit to the school, and we think it's a benefit to the surrounding community because there would be potentially less development of, that's not the school, on the property under this proposal than if it was left the way it is, if you were to deny the application. So we're not quite understanding what the, what the opposition is, and we'd be happy to meet with any of the neighbors to, to talk about it further. We, we do want to be transparent, we do want to be welcoming and, and make sure that everybody understands, you know, what we're trying to accomplish at the school.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? You do?
So what I'm hearing is, you're a member of the board. There's another member of the board here. The board is having discussions regarding future needs for the students, whether it be athletic, or educational, or even parking.
Correct.
And what I'm hearing is, is that, that's a discussion that's going on now and will go on in the future, and that you've arrived at no conclusions at this point. Is that correct?
We've been doing our internal planning and looking at that. We're also starting to do some feasibility studies. As you probably know, we, as a private school, as a private Christian school, we do not get any state or federal funding. And so it all has to be, you know, self-generated, and so we have to look at that all very carefully. We're also continuing to do deferred maintenance projects. We have, you know, a hundred-acre campus, and, and that takes a lot to maintain. So we're always looking at those opportunities. And one of the opportunities we're currently investigating and planning for is having some additional parking by the high school and incorporating some solar panels so that we can reduce some of our electrical costs. But that's all part, that would all be on our Planning Area One, our main campus.
So, in essence, no absolute decision has been made, yet that's a conversation that will go on for who knows how long, how, for long it takes you to do the, do the planning. So what, what I'm trying to get at is, there's lots of rumors that are going around. And like any city, we got tons and tons of rumors. And what I'm hearing is, there is no validity to any of these rumors. There's no development that has been decided upon. There's not even a decision that we are going to put a sports field in any one of those areas or anything else to that matter. This is, this is to make a change for, to allow for really kind of a neater footprint to do a sports field, gymnasium, whatever, whatever, whatever the future needs might, might hold.
That's the purpose of the PDO amendment. And in terms of any near-term things, we have been talking to the staff about expanding a bay of parking next to our high school parking and incorporating a solar field, solar panels on top of that parking.
So that's been, that's been the biggest conversation so far, is the parking.
Yes, yes.
Right now, I, I live in a neighborhood on your other side, off of Paulba. And I noticed that you put a entrance in, you know, you've got.
The gatehouse.
Security, yeah. And is, is that your primary gate or your only gate into the property?
That's our primary gate, gated access. There are, there is another secondary access by that vacant pad where the parking is. Usually those gates are closed, and there's another access on the elementary school that goes on to Paulba.
And that's, and that's, they're both on Paulba? Is that correct?
Yes, all the access right now is off of Paulba.
So there is no access off of Rancho Vista, then?
There's no access off of Rancho Vista currently, although the master plan that was approved for the school in the early two thousands does have a, a future road that would connect to Rancho Vista.
Okay. But from what I can see, your, your main primary gate, I mean, you just spent a lot of money putting, putting that.
Yes.
That security gate in. And so that would likely be the primary place.
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, I see cars going in and all out, dropping off students and so on and so forth. Teachers going in. Okay? That's, that's all I have.
Anything else, Adam? Anything else for the applicant?
Make sure I understand this correctly. You don't have anything planned at this point in time to go on those, on those acres?
On the.
On the proposed.
On the three A, three B, or on the master, so.
On the entire.
Anything, anything under Planning Area One is our main campus. And as I mentioned, we do have a master plan that is, and it was a conditionally used permit that was approved in the early two thousands. So it does show various facilities, but we haven't had the resources to build those yet. When we are ready to build any of those, that still goes through a process with the city of a, it's either a development hearing or a develop, director's hearing, or a minor modification, or if it's a major change, then it's a major modification to our existing CUP. So I don't, I, I'm, I'm wanting, I'm trying to answer your question as best I can, but we are always kind of looking at building out our approved master plan. So I don't, does that answer your question, or?
Yeah, I, I think so, it does. That's, that's all I have.
I have one question. So as of right now, the planning area R one, I mean, R, sorry, R, one A and one B is not permitted to have senior housing?
Correct.
And today, you are proposing to reorganize it to allow senior housing in the entire prop, all properties?
No, it would only be in those Planning Area One C and one D. And the only reason it would be there is because of state law on this no-net loss. If it was up to us, we would, we would not be asking for senior housing in any of the Planning Area One area. So Planning Area One A, which is the biggest area in our main campus, and Planning Area One B, which is the elementary school, still would not allow any senior housing. So it's really a kind of a technicality to comply with state law.
Is that, is that correct, staff, that, on the attachment?
That is correct. And even to follow up further on what Dee was saying, I'll show you right here. So if you see the, the asterisks below, senior housing is allowed in PA one C and one D, so in one A and one B, it would not be allowed. When Linfield originally did submit their Plan of Overlay Amendment, they were choosing to remove senior housing completely from Planning Area One. Once staff reviewed the application and we were actually scheduled for a public hearing, our city attorney realized that the no-net loss was taking effect. And that's when one C and one D had to be created in order to meet the state, state regulations of not removing housing from our inventory. So you will never see senior housing in one A or one B.
So at the very top, I'm reading area R, I mean, Area One A. As of right now, there is no senior housing allowed in that use, right?
Correct.
Yeah. But in the future, I mean, there would be no camp, I mean, it would be a permitted use?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Down below, senior housing is allowed in PA one C and one D of Planning Area One. Those are the only two sub areas of Planning Area One that senior housing is allowed.
Where, where senior housing is allowed, if they decided they wanted to build, say, a sports field there, could they build a sports field in that area?
Yes.
So that would reduce the footprint that would be available for senior housing?
No. So, under state law, we just have to, we can't reduce where housing is already an allowable use. So because we were take, we were shrinking the footprint, or the proposal is to shrink the footprint of Planning Area Three, which allows senior housing as a conditionally permitted use, the city was left with two options. If we move forward with that proposal and the applicant doesn't plan for it within their own property, the city would be required to upzone somewhere else in the city. Like, by state law, that's what's required to happen. So in discussions with the applicant, the applicant said, well, let's just modify this and transfer that same acreage over to Planning Area One, which is where the school campus is. But rather than have all of Planning Area One A allow for senior housing, it's just that small acreage. So that's why those two planning areas were created.
So you're shrinking what is allowable, and, and we're still satisfying state law so we don't get sued by the state. If that was to be built on for something else, then we would have to find some other little place.
No, all we have to do is allow for there to be senior housing, which is what the code amendment does. It allows for there to be senior housing as a conditionally permitted use. As was noted, there would still need to be an application, and as long as we allow for it, that's, we've met the requirement. It doesn't mean that senior housing ever has to be constructed.
So that area, by them doing other things, can shrink more and more and more to what possibly can be built for senior, senior housing?
Correct, because it's just one of the conditionally permitted uses. There's a whole host, if you saw the list, they, there's a number of things they can do with that property.
Right, okay.
Scott, can you, can you pop up right now the, the map of the, the existing? Okay, so as I'm reading this table, seventeen point twenty-two point one eighty-six B. Let's just focus on the existing planning areas. So today, senior housing would not be a conditionally permitted use in one A.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the new one, the new area, now, one A is a permitted, conditionally permitted use?
No.
No. So. Because I have right here, there's a, there's a C, and then there's a.
There's a C with a double asterisk. Double asterisk sends you to the bottom of the table. It says in one C and one D that the senior housing is conditionally allowed.
Okay, the asterisk confused me.
Scott, it is allowed, though, senior housing is allowed conditionally under Area Three A and three B now?
Correct.
Okay, so. I still don't understand. You're putting the cart before the horse, it almost seems like, for, to me. If you don't have any ideas of what you want to do with that yet, why are we changing it? Wouldn't it make more, make more sense to me if you came back with a proposal for that and the change at the same time? And I think then everybody would know what's happening, instead of doing something and then down the line. So, can you?
I don't, could you put the map back? I don't, it, it, could you put the map back up in the? So if you, even though in both exhibits, the area that was three A, three B and then the new three A, three B Planning Area One C, one D looks pretty much the same. There are some adjustments in that boundary between that and Planning Area One A. And those adjustments are what's allowing us to put in another row of parking and to do our solar on top of that parking and to expand our maintenance yard. So those are kind of our next projects that we're trying to accomplish. And we have an application in for Edison to get those, you know, credits for that, for the solar. But to do that, for us to do that and to submit those plans to the city, even though those were all approved uses within our property, we had to adjust that boundary. So when you're asking why are we doing this now before we're coming in with a project? It, we, we needed to adjust it in order to go to this next step with that parking lot solar project.
Which is on, on one A?
Which is on one A, yes, one A adjustment to it, but, but there's some adjustments in there.
Okay.
And, uh, and as we mentioned before, our original proposal was to only shrink three A and three B and just expand one A and do the rest of our, you know, master planning for the campus that we're working on. But because of the state law consideration, we had to retain that fifteen acres in some configuration. So we're trying to do it in the way that least impacts the school and doesn't increase the potential for, you know, residential housing. We're really, in our minds, decreasing it considerably.
Um, Adam?
If we're, if we're moving on to Scott, my question was more on the staff side.
Any other questions of the applicant and just stay there though, probably. But are there any other questions of the applicant at this point? We good? Okay, questions of staff?
So I, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, we're, I know there's a lot of discussion tonight about potential buildings and senior housing, but we're looking at an overlay here. So strictly looking at the overlay, there could potentially be development coming into the current three A and three B at any time right now as it stands.
Right, so let's do this, Mike, put that mac, my map back up. So a lot of the discussion here is what could happen here today, what could have already happened? So three A and three B, as you can see, are much bigger parcels. Three A and three B proposed are much smaller. So anytime over the past ten, fifteen years, and I'll put up the list of what could be developed here. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the application came in for the Generations Project. It was approved in two thousand and seventeen, it expired this year in March, so it couldn't come. But it was a four story, sixty-ish foot, uh, congregate care facility. That came to Planning Commission, it came to City Council, it was approved, again, it such expired. So at any time, that Linfield could come in, like I said, five years ago, tomorrow for art gallery, auditorium, community health care clinic, community center, conference center, convalescent home, daycare center, another educational institution, uh, garages, like someone did mention a golf course, community sports training facility, government offices, government services, a helipad, a heliport, a hospital, a library, a museum, uh, parks and recreation facilities, a police or sheriff station, post office, public utilities, uh, religious facilities, if a church wanted to go there. We have a couple residential uses we talked about earlier, um, skilled nursing facility, sports and recreation facility, utility office and service yards. That's all stuff that could have come in, Linfield could walk in tomorrow with. So if anything that comes in on this list is going to come back to Planning Commission. So like they said, they're just doing the shrinking of the land. So what would come in now is it would be on the existing three A and three B, which is much more larger and would be much more intense than what they're proposing on the smaller things.
And, and thank you, cause that, that's kind of what I was trying to clarify.
Right.
I don't, I don't want to discount you guys, when, when people come to these meetings and voice their opinions, you took time out, it, it means a lot to us. Uh, so I appreciate everybody coming out. But from what I'm seeing, if I'm understanding this correctly, the concern about losing the view or the openness is actually being shrunken by this proposal to a smaller area where it would, where currently somebody could. If, if this is rejected tonight, the area of potential development is a much larger area than what's proposed on the new one. And that's what I was looking for clarification on, Scott, so thank you.
There also was the mention of a traffic study. So due to the size of even the reduced lots, um, even if it's, um, these proposed or conditionally proposed uses, some form of traffic review would be required. Um, Public Works and our traffic engineer would, would determine what level that is. But a project just wouldn't come in and no environmental reviews done and it just ends up in front of the Planning Commission. There would be a thorough environmental review that's required before it would come to you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think that's a great clarification so that we know what we're talking about tonight. Um, any other questions for staff?
I have one more question for staff.
Fernando?
Okay. So if, uh, if I'm understanding everything correctly, and I'm looking at the notes right on the table seventeen point twenty-two, and there's an asterisk at the bottom and it says senior housing is allowed in P A one C, P A one D of Planning Area One. Could you add a note there or another note saying that, um, senior housing is not allowed in P A one A and P A one B? If, if that's, if that's what I'm.
Yeah, we could revise this note to read senior housing is allowed in P A one C and one D and not in one A and one B of Planning Area One or sub areas. We can, we can make the note more clear.
Yeah, that, that's a little confusing to me because, you know, it'll be very clear to everyone that P, uh, Planning Area One A and one B is, will remain the same. There's not an intensity like you were describing. And that's it, that'd be good for me.
That's not a problem, staff can do that.
Sure. Any other questions of staff? Um, I too would like to thank everyone that came out to speak tonight. I know you're taking time out of your lives and this is important to you. We are concerned with your quality of life. And the woman who spoke, who's lived here for fifty years, we love the city. I've been here a long time too, and so we do care. And we do listen and hear everything that you're saying. And so tonight, there's something specifically that we're voting on and that we need to decide whether that would be good for the city or not, and so that's what we're going to do tonight. If there's not any other questions of staff or the applicant, we're good? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and discussion from my colleagues. I'm going to start down this end.
Okay, it was very little, little confusing looking at the map, looking at the chart, looking at everything. But to me, after reviewing everything and looking at the table and looking how the area is used now and how it's being modified, I still believe it, it's the same intensity and it's the same type of use. And with that note, that staff, if staff could add that note, then I'm confident that, that there would be no intensification of use, so that's it.
Gary?
Yeah, um, I'm not, I understand the, the need to adjust that boundary for what you, what you have plans for, I guess. I would just prefer to have something concrete to deal with instead of a whole range of uses. So I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what the urgency is, um, to do it until we know what is going to take place there. So, um, I still am not sold yet on why it has to be done tonight since there's nothing at this point planned. So, um, that's just my thinking on it.
Adam?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Bob?
I, I differ a little bit on that in that, um, one of the questions I had before I got here was I noticed some little changes in the, the footprint. And now I'm getting the explanation of why is that those minor little changes is where they have planned for the parking and the solar. And that if you're going to make that little change, you might as well make the change, you know, the bigger, bigger change. And what I hear him saying is s, the, the number of students coming here were, were full. And, um, we want to put everything towards those students. And our future discussions are sports fields, uh, you know, educational type things. And let's, we don't have any interest in the senior housing. Let's shrink that area as much as we can while, you know, they would like it to go away. We're saying it can't go away because the state law won't let it go away. Um, but we can, we can shrink it so that it has a potentially less effect on, on the neighbors and less effect on, on the school as well. I think you get to the point where you shrink certain things, the land size, that it no, no longer becomes a viable product, you know, project. And that, that has the potential of happening here that, um, it's an allowable use, but it's not the only use. They end up building a sports field on, on, uh, on three A or whatever. And now there's less land available and, and, you know, a viable project just, it doesn't, doesn't exist anymore. So I, I, to me, I, I think I see what they're trying to do. Yeah, I think if this came in with, you know, a project plan and everything, that would be great. But, um, I don't think they're at that, that point. They're, I know to get, um, we just went through some things with Edison and, and, I mean, it was like a year just getting them rubber stamped something. So just getting the permission to put the solar panels on, they can't, they can't put a, uh, they can't put a permit in to get, you know, request to, to get parking until that's done. So, you know, that's.
That's, that's fine, I understand all that, I just, I'm just having a hard time with the urgency.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yep. Adam?
And I, and I would concur with Vice Chair Hagel here, and I, and I think that is, I think the minor sense of urgency is they do have stuff that needs to be done right now that they cannot do as, as it's currently drawn up. And while we're, the map here, I try to remind myself, this is a hundred acre parcel, I think is what was quoted at earlier. So what looks very minute on a.
Right, yeah.
On a three inch scale map is, is quite large. Um, to my understanding, my belief after hearing the applicant, that if, and I would get your point if they didn't, weren't working on this parking lot expansion or working at some of the solar, just saying, now let's just do this just to do it. But it sounds like there is a need that needed to be addressed. And I was going to say exactly what, what you said, that it, it seems that, well, if we're going to address this part now, let's just address it all at the same time. And, and that's, that's my take on it. I, I, I think the fact, and, and again, I appreciate the comments from, um, all the residents that, that came out here. But I think looking at this, we can play the what-if game on, on anything that, that's done. We're not approving anything other than an overlay map right now for one. But in shrinking that area, I, I think that's actually serving as a protection of more area than, than what's currently available to be developed right now. So that, that's how I see it, I see, I see it as, as a benefit.
Yeah, I think if, if you're going to redo the map, I think you only want to redo it once. And I mean, there's a cost to this process. So for them to make a minor change and then come back, you know, again and again and continue making map changes would be probably not a good use of anybody's time or money, so.
Thank you, thanks. Oh, go ahead.
Usually only government does that.
Yeah. Um, thanks to everybody for their comments. Um, yeah, Deanna, I was here on that original, um, decision for Linfield. You were here too? Yeah, for Linfield Generations. So it's interesting now looking at it and, um, hearing the different perspectives. And I understand where you're coming from as homeowners, um, you know, when that time comes, you know, if something is proposed to be built, you know, for sure, you know, that, if that's something that, um, is not good for your quality of life, yes, of course, you should come and speak out on that. I think that's not what's happening tonight. Um, and I also think after seeing the Linfield Generations approved, we approved it, City Council approved it. And there's things that we have to approve because of the findings that are made. And sometimes that's hard to understand when you're not going through that whole process. But now if someone were to come in and wanted to develop something, it wouldn't be as big. It wouldn't be like that Linfield Generations. And so I think that in the long run, with this map being reconfigured, it's going to, it's going to benefit those of you that are here tonight on Rancho Vista Road and, um, and the school, you know, giving more room to the school. And I think that's, that's what's important to me is this is, this is Linfield School and I think that's where it should be focused on. And hopefully, you know, down the road, we're making decisions on something that's also good for Linfield School. And so, um, I think that's what we have to make the decision on tonight and vote on that. And if no one has any other comments, let's go ahead with the motion, if anybody has a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept staff's recommendation on the approval of planning application number P A twenty-three dash zero two six zero.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Adam Rees and Fernando Solis.
And before, um, the vote, uh, Commissioner Solis had recommended adding, um, a notation which would read that senior housing is allowed in P A one C and one D only and not allowed in P A one A and one B. Okay, well, it's conditionally, so that's the little asterisk. So the, there's a C on the chart that shows conditionally permitted, but the little asterisk.
Correct, yes. It's just more for clarity for.
Right, okay, so that's part of the motion.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed?
Um, nay.
Okay. So we have four in favor and one opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, thank you, everyone, thanks staff, thanks Scott. All right. We are going to. Move to our next.
Madam Chair, we're going to grab the Deputy City Manager before we start the next one.
Oh, yes, Deputy City Manager, come on back. Oh, she did. All right, we're going to, um, go to our next item of business here in the, in the public hearing, number four. Planning application number P A two-two dash zero zero three five. A development plan for the construction of an approximately two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine square foot, three hundred and fifty-five room, seven story, ninety-one foot, full-service hotel that includes an approximately a hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two square foot parking garage, conference facilities, ballrooms, full-service spa, restaurants, bars, lounges, retail outlets, workout facility, outdoor pool area and an outdoor wedding garden. And P A two-two dash zero zero three seven, a tentative parcel map, T P M three eight, three four nine, to combine ten existing lots into a single lot. The project is located on the east side of Front Street between First Street and Second Street. Do I need to read all those numbers? A P N.
No, it's not necessary.
Okay, thanks. Scott, you're on.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Um, as you did already state again, P A twenty-two, zero zero three five and twenty-two, zero zero three seven is the Temecula Resort and Spa. Just to give a warning or a heads up, this is a longer presentation than normal, so bear with me, but we'll hit everything as we go through it. So also, as you stated, P A twenty-two, oh, oh, three five is a development plan for the construction of an approximately two hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine square foot, three hundred and fifty-five room, seven story, ninety-one foot, full-service hotel that includes an approximately a hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two square foot parking garage. And P A twenty-two, zero zero three seven, which is a tentative parcel map, T P M three eight, three four nine, to combine ten existing lots into a single lot. Project location is here on your screen, which is located on the east side of Old Town Front Street between First Street and Second Street adjacent, adjacent to Interstate fifteen. So a little bit of history on the project site. The project was submitted on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. That was the development plan. Three days later, on January tenth, the tentative parcel map was submitted. Between the submittal of the project and tonight, the project was presented to the City Council Old Town Steering Committee, which were all publicly noticed meetings, and the Planning Commission Old Town Temecula Subcommittee. So after July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, project was presented to the Steering Committee. Concerns from the committee included how the building interacts with Old Town, the location of the pool on the eastern, not western side of the building, the massing of the building and the canyon effect along Second Street. The Steering Committee also encouraged the app. The Steering Committee also encouraged the applicant's representative to listen to staff. The applicant's representative and two members of the public were in attendance at that meeting. On September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, the project was presented to the Steering Committee as well. Concerns from the committee included how the building interacts with Oldtown, location of the pool on the eastern side, on the eastern, not western side of the building, the massing of the building is seen at, at the southern entrance to Oldtown and the canyon effect along Second Street. The applicant team and one member of the public were in attendance at that meeting. On April twenty-fifth of this year, the project was presented to the Steering Committee. Concerns from the committee included concern with the lack of progress addressing previous concerns of the Steering Committee. The Steering Committee encouraged the applicant team to work with staff. However, the applicant indicated that he wanted to move on to the Planning Commission without addressing staff comments, and the Steering Committee said to take it to Planning Commission. The applicant team was the only people in attendance at that meeting in addition to staff. Finally, on May twenty-third of this year, the project was again presented to the Steering Committee. At that committee, at that meeting, the committee indicated that nothing had changed since the project was last presented to the committee, and the committee has a duty as City Council members to the residents of the city for projects to comply with a specific plan. The applicant team was in attendance in addition to staff. Those were the only people at that meeting. And then the project was also presented to the PC, Oldtown Temecula Subcommittee. Concerns from that Subcommittee included the massing of the building, the lack of building articulation along the streets. The entrance to the hotel should be a grand entrance that draws people into the building. The location of the pool adjacent to the freeway is opposed to the western side of the building and interacting with Oldtown. The outside of the building has the right, has to be right fit in Oldtown, and the project should not move forward to Planning Commission unless every development standard in the specific plan has been met. The applicant was not present at that meeting, and staff did provide the above comments in a comment later, later letter dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. So a little bit of analysis, the project is located in the downtown core hotel overlay district of the Oldtown specific plan. Again, it is seven stories, ninety-one feet high, contains three-hundred-and-fifty-five rooms, three-hundred-and-ninety-five parking spaces, which are within the parking garage, three-hundred-and-eighty-four parking spaces are required for the three-hundred-and-fifty-five hotel rooms and the approximately eighty-five-hundred square feet of meeting space. So in the specific plan, there's an allowance for full-service hotels. That was adopted by ordinance on May twenty-fifth, twenty-five, two thousand and ten by the City Council and allows for full-service hotels at a building height greater than other buildings in Oldtown. So you're allowed to go up to eight stories and a hundred feet in height in the hotel overlay zone for a full-service hotel. The height allowance was seen as an incentive to bring additional economic activity into Oldtown, to bring conferences or large meetings or events, have somewhere for people to stay, have a conference center. In order to receive that height incentive though, and designation of a full-service, full-service hotel, projects are required to meet the design criteria of the development standards of the zoning district, but also the supplemental requirements for, for full-service hotels. Those requirements of the full-service hotel include hotel lobby shall be located along streets, plazas, courtyards, or sidewalks to create visual entrance for pedestrians. Hotel rooms shall be accessed from an interior hallway. Hotels shall provide an onsite restaurant with table service provided primarily by waitperson seating for at least thirty customers and full menu service offering multiple entrees with onsite preparation. Hotels shall provide conference facility space to accommodate a minimum of a thousand people. Development shall be designed to create an outdoor pedestrian space or spaces featuring amenities such as benches, outdoor dining, public art, gardens, courtyard, forecourt, or a plaza. Building facade shall be articulated with wall offsets, recesses, recesses, opening, ornamentation, and colors and materials to add texture with special detail to the streetscape. Pool and spa facilities are permitted on patios, balconies, or terraces located on the second floor or above when integrated into the building architecture and design. So how do pedestrians access the building? So you can access it off of Front Street through this entrance, which is an entrance into the main restaurant of the hotel. That's how it looks. You can enter, enter it to the main entrance to the actual hotel through this entrance. You can entrance it along First Street adjacent to the parking garage entrance, and also along Second Street adjacent to the parking garage entrance. So if you are driving a car, how do you get into the hotel? You either access it on First Street at the parking garage entrance, and there's how that looks, or along Second Street at the parking garage. Now, something that is very well done on this project is the separation of pedestrian from vehicular entrance. So I always use this example, you know, if you're entering or exiting our parking garage, there's not a separate pedestrian walkway to get in. You're kind of, you're mingling with the cars, and there's always that interaction that's like, we're leaving at work every day, and it's like, are people coming? So here, on both entrances, or egress and egress, you have the drive aisle in red and pedestrian in green separated by, you know, a good amount of space where there's not that interaction. So the actual operations on the interior of the hotel, you have the ground floor. So you have the exterior entrance off of Oldtown Front Street. You have the interior entrance from the parking garage, a registration area as the entrance, grand ballroom, banquet lounge, restaurant, and then back a house, which includes, you know, things, kitchen, security, pantry, offices, things of that nature. Then on the second floor along Front Street, which is the ground floor along, along Second Street, you have the junior ballroom, meeting rooms, day spa facilities, which are quite, which are quite extensive, a pub and restaurant and a lounge, a gym facility, which also contains yoga. And then you have a retail outlet here located along Second Street. And then finally, the mechanical rooms on the corner of Second Street. So as we proceed to the third floor, you have the spa, pool and spa area that are overlooking Interstate fifteen. You have the wedding and guarding, garden, wedding garden venue that's overlooking Oldtown Front Street. And then you have the dog park and dog run. And then you also have guest rooms here along Second Street, which would include five rooms that have decks that are overlooking Second Street. So in terms of architecture, um, the proposed, proposed architecture style is neoclassical revival, which is allowed for the Oldtown specific plan. So style elements within the design and the project are as follows. Instead of just listing them, we're just going to show them to you on the renderings. So this is the main corner of the building, the first thing you'll see when you enter Oldtown there on the very bottom left of the screen, you can see where the arch is. So just give you a little bit of idea exactly where the project is. You have vertical columns, so on the first floor, they either go from the first to the second floor, or from the first floor all the way to the third floor. And then down, I see down Second Street there, they go from the third floor all the way to the top of the building. So your vertical coins, so that's the detail of how that'll look on the corners of the buildings, or the building. And then you have the gallery front, frontage there along Second Street, and we'll get, or First Street, we'll get a little bit more into that in a minute. Along First Street or along Oldtown Front Street, you have the horizontal band, and it's a detail of how that will look. So, and then you have decorative, or vertical columns, and then decorative cornice, the detail on that. So here along First Street, you have the roofline pediments that have motifs, which you can see here, and then enlarged further. And then again, you have that gallery frontage, so something that's good and unique about this is the second floor of this in the hotel is where they have the pub and restaurant. So you will be able to access that gallery frontage and have outdoor dining on top of the gallery. Terms of landscaping, uh, the Oldtown specific plan, street trees are proposed along the streets, streetscape of First Street, Second Street, and Oldtown Front Street. You can see the locations there in green. As also stated, there is a tentative parcel map that's associated with this project to consolidate ten existing contiguous parcels into a single parcel. This is how the existing parcels lay out. And then this would be how the single proposed parcel. So now, as we move on to Oldtown development standards, um, staff has made several attempts to work with the applicant to redesign the project so that it meets the development standards set forth in the Oldtown specific plan. So we've been through eight formal reviews of the development plan and six formal reviews of the tentative map. However, several items and development standards remain unaddressed by the applicant. And then on July thirteenth of this year, the applicant team acknowledged that they would no longer address written, verbal, or red line comments, and therefore requested that staff schedule the project for a public hearing. So the Oldtown specific plan provides development standards for all projects within the Oldtown specific plan area. Those standards are intended to ensure that proposed development within the Oldtown area occur in a manner that is consistent with the community's vision for building form, massing, architectural character, and the building's relationship to the street and public realm. So as proposed, the project does not meet the following design standards: pedestrian experience and the building's relationship to the street, and building articulation. So for the pedestrian experience and building relationship to the street, so the Oldtown specific plan states, so these next couple slides is language directly from the specific plan. It's not staff's opinion, it's not the planner's opinion, it's verbatim from the specific plan. The main community design goal of the specific plan is to create a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, walkable downtown destination. Objective seven of the community design goals is of the specific plan is to promote a clearly pedestrian atmosphere within the downtown core. Public, animated in the public realm, objective five of the specific plan is to encourage large at-grade windows and front door entrances to help enliven the streets, provide visual entrance for pedestrians, and create synergy within the downtown core district. New development will respect the hysterical heritage of Oldtown and promote a lively pedestrian-oriented streetscape by following architectural guidelines related to building form, architectural style, street furniture design materials, colors, and details detailing resulting in high-quality, well-designed buildings. The realm of the streets is the primary public asset in Oldtown. The goals for this public realm include clearly defined street edges, architecture with character, and a lively and inter, interesting pedestrian experience. While the private needs of tenants are met with the interior spaces, the public responsibility is to contribute to a clearly defined street that provides a pleasant pedestrian experience. And finally, Oldtown is intended to maintain an environment orientated to the pedestrian. The ambiance along the streetscape should meet not only the functional and utilitarian needs of the pedestrians, but also appeal to the pedestrian's sensory perception and spatial awareness of the built environment. So the non-compliance with this development standard is the, the proposed project does not promote or provide a pedestrian-friendly experience, atmosphere, or streetscape, enliven the streets, and does not provide a visual interest for pedestrians along any of the frontage other than the entrances into the building. So again, this is the main corner of the building, the first thing you'll see when you come into Oldtown from the south. This is the proposed location of the restaurant. This is the proposed location of a banquet lounge. If you're a pedestrian walking along the street, how do you know the difference between a restaurant or a banquet lounge or a bank or anything? If you, if you have a long repetitive windows that do not open up under the public, do not provide outdoor dining, outdoor interaction to the public pedestrian experience. So kind of as I said, the repetitive windows along the first floor of the building do not open up to the street and therefore closes off the building to the outside environment. No patio dining, large doors or windows that can open to the street are provided, which would provide a pedestrian experience, a pedestrian atmosphere, and synergy between the built and pedestrian environments. So again, this is along, along Front Street, you have the repetitive windows, don't know what's going on in there other than able to look at floor plans. A requirement for a full-service hotel is that a development shall be designed to create an outdoor pedestrian space or spaces featuring amenities such as benches, outdoor dining, public art, gardens, courtyard, forecourt, or a plaza. So this is along Second Street. So keep in mind, along Second Street, across the street, you have the Truax Building, you have Goat and Vine, you have other restaurants, you have the new wine bar, very lively area, any night of the week, especially on the weekends. These are the main areas that's being proposed on the hotel. You have a storage area, you have a retail area, which is nine hundred square feet, and then you have a transformer room, a fire riser room, and an electrical room. So moving on to the Oldtown development standard for building articulation. Again, the Oldtown specific plan states, verbatim and directly, no shop front facing a public street shall be more than a hundred feet wide without incorporating architectural elements into the facade to convey the appearance of multiple shops rather than one large facade. Commercial block buildings may be permitted to be composed of one dominant volume, but should meet the design guideline criteria for architectural expression and variation in the building facade. Building facade shall be articulated with wall offsets, recesses, openings, ornamentation, and colors and walls, colors and materials to add texture with special detail to the streetscape. Building facades that exceed fifty linear feet should incorporate varying architectural expression, character, and roofline so as to appear to be made up of various smaller building facades. So the non-compliant of this development standard, so the proposed project is a commercial block building with building facades that exceed fifty or linear feet on all sides. The applicant proposes nonusable balconies, Juliet, and either a one-foot or two-foot building articulation every fifty feet or less on all sides of the building. This minimal amount of articulation is not, is not appropriate for the massing of a building of this proposed height. So you see, as you work your way down the building from left to right, you have a flat surface, and then you have a one-foot in-depth articulation, and then it pops back out to two feet, goes back down to one foot, pops out to two feet, down to one foot, back up to two feet, and then finally, one foot on the end of the building. So this is repetitive on all sides of the building, but we'll show you Second Street as well. So the facade along Second Street provides for an additional ten-foot setback after the first approximately forty-five linear feet, but then only a one-to-two-foot articulation for the rest of the frontage. So this is the first forty-five feet, which is pushed out to the build-to line. After that, the building does step back an additional ten feet, which gives us, this is the area that has those five rooms that have, have the patios that overlook Second Street. So this is set back an additional nine feet off of the build-to line, and then it just continues and matriculates itself the rest of the way down the building in a one-foot increment. So you're just talking about, you know, you take the, the width of a ruler, twelve inches every thirty, forty feet on a articulation on a long run. Additionally, the shop fronts facing First Street, Second Street, and Oldtown Front Street all exceed a hundred feet and do not propose artic, artic, architectural elements into the facades that convey the appearance of multiple shops, rather one large facade at the proposed shop front incorporates repetitive identical windows that do not contain any character or distinguish from one shop to another, and does not appear to be made up of various smaller building facades. So again, if you're walking on Front Street, if you're walking on Second Street, the same window, very repetitive over and over again, no openings to the streetscape, no pedestrian interaction. So that concludes the development standards. However, there are additional design concerns that staff has. So staff has identified design concerns that have been commented on and discussed with the applicants since the beginning of the entitlement process, and the applicant has been unwilling to incorporate them into the design of, of the project. Those concerns include the pool location, the corner of Oldtown Front Street and First Street, the Second Street pedestrian experience. So for the pool location, location of the pool's been a concern with staff since the pre-application stage of the project. The pool is proposed along and above Interstate fifteen. The pool area is approximately a hundred feet from, a hundred and one feet from the travel lanes of Interstate fifteen. The concerns include noise, automobile emissions, and shade within the pool area. A shade study was requested and provided, showing on the longest day of the year, which is the summer, summer solstice of June twenty-first, the majority of the pool and deck will be in the shade. And the pool area is not integrated into the building architecture and does not interact with Oldtown. So this is at three PM on June twenty-first of last year, or of this year. Um, as you can see, the shade is encompassing the majority of the pool area, and then, then on the right, that shows the location of the edge of the pool. the right, that shows the location of the edge of the pool area in relation to the travel lanes of the interstate. And then here is a rendering. So that green area, you know, that's the location of the freeway. So the corner of Old Town Front Street and First Street, it's a, really the last, really unique opportunity in Old Town to make a statement with your building, you know, everything's built out, someone tells something, gets knocked down and rebuilt, this is really it. It's the first building that people will see when entering the arch of Old Town Temecula. So anyone coming from the south, you make that turn off of Santiago, or from across the creek, well, I mean, it's 90 feet tall, so it's the first building you're gonna see from anywhere, especially coming into Old Town. So, this should stand apart and make a statement. So, as currently proposed, the corner of the building is no different than any other portion of the building. It contains an entrance into the restaurant, but not a grand entrance into the hotel. So again, this is the corner of the building. That's the restaurant entrance, and then the entrance into the hotel is off of Front Street. So if you look at the building, there's nothing different, even the roof line is less articulated than other parts of the building. So as we move on to the Second Street pedestrian experience, so the pedestrian experience along Second Street contains a retail outlet, pedestrian vehicle ingress and egress, storage room, fire riser room, and electrical and transformer rooms. So the retail portion of the Second Street frontage is approximately 27%. The mechanical and storage rooms are approximately 51%. So obviously, mechanical rooms do not contribute to the pedestrian experience and should be relocated to allow for larger commercial uses on the ground floor. So and also, the southwest corner of the third floor of the building is the preferred location of the pool area. It would provide a unique interaction with the street views into Old Town, matching how the wedding gardens proposed, and removing the pool from the shade, noise, and emissions of the freeway. By locating the pool on that location, the massing of the building could also be pushed further back into the interior of the building and the adjacent four-story building, which is the Truax Building. So again, we've seen this slide once before already tonight, this is the Second Street. You have the storage area, the retailer area, which is the 900 square feet, and then the transformer room, fire riser room, and electrical room. So, this was a rendering that was provided by the applicant at the request of staff to show the relation of the proposed project to the existing physical environment. However, staff does not feel the rendering provides an adequate representation of building comparison when you compare the proposed building height of the project tonight compared to the existing building of the Truax Building. And then this area here in red would show the approximate area that could have an additional setback if the pool was located, and we'll show you that pool location here in a minute. So this is the third floor. As currently proposed, you see the pool there is in the left-hand side, and then on the right-hand side is the wedding garden. This has always been the preferred pool location. It provides interaction with Old Town, you know, if you're on that third floor and you have your pool area looking over into Old Town, you're getting the views down Second Street into Old Town, there's the interaction with people that are waiting in line for an hour and a half at Goat &amp; Vine, or the new wine bar, whatever's going on. And it also provides interaction with the wedding garden instead of separating the two. So, in terms of environmental, if the project is a redesign, it results in no environmental determination at this time, or it is CECL category exemption for Section 15061B4 since projects are exempt from CECL if rejected or disapproved by a public agency. So with that, staff's recommendation tonight is that the planning commission requests redesign of the project in order to comply with the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. That does conclude my report. I'm again here for questions, and the whole entire applicant team is here as well.
Thank you so much Scott for that detailed presentation and all that work. Questions of staff first, please? Any questions?
I have one question for staff. I know this architectural, I'm not sure if this architectural style is one of the design-allowed architectural styles in the downtown, what are the other ones besides this one?
So the allowed architectural styles are American mercantile, Spanish influence, Monterey, early modernism, neoclassical revival, craftsman bungalow, Queen Anne, and western frontier.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant up. Good evening.
Good evening Commissioners. As you well know, I'm the consultant for Mr. Kim's Hotel. My background originally started out here 20 years ago. I worked with a large developer, as you well know, who I worked for. We since moved on, and I was also part of the Old Town Local Review Board. The last position I held at the Old Town Local Review Board was the chairman of the Old Town Local Review Board. As in anything else that I do, I immerse myself into the books and plans and the design criterias. And one of the things that helped Mr. Kim was that I knew the book inside and out. If I didn't, I wouldn't have all these tabs where to go reference-wise. And in doing so, I was able to help him take his original Spanish design that he had that had nondescript, I don't know if you have a copy of that picture or not, but it was a very nondescript, there was no architectural features whatsoever to it. It looked like a San Quentin prison, seven feet, or seven stories tall, just a straight block building. So in doing so, we changed the concept from a Spanish-style building to a neoclassical design. If you imagine the city of Temecula growing as a tree in the middle of the Main Street, the building would start to grow as the tree progresses. In 1900s, the tree would be very small, and the buildings would reflect wooden craftsman style pioneer look, such as the Butterfield Square that was there prior to being demolished by the Truax Hotel. Other buildings were through the RDA Association, was that we had Mr. Buffum, if I pronounce his name wrong, I'll correct that, designed the place, and he wanted to create a mini Dolly Parton, Dollywood, have an old country, western, shoot them up down the streets and all that. So the buildings were allowed to articulate the colors and the styles of wooden slats, brownish. A perfect example would be for, if you were to go look at the Old Town Tire Shop. The top portion of that Old Town Tire Shop was part of that RDA request to make it look better. And then you go down the street further, you go down to Gambling Cowboy, it's got a little bit of a nuance to it of a wooden building, then you go to the community center, which is also, has that western feel to it. Now, as I digress here, what I'm trying to say is that in this area, I actually looked at this area very closely on what to do, the limits, constraints, and how we were going to produce per the specifications that clearly states you can have 100-foot-tall building, eight stories, 100 feet tall. In that statement, there is no design criteria that says thou shalt do it this way. It states in there, in the specific plan, it says that you have to have an articulation of 50 feet, every 50 feet has to be a different look. Well, the comment is this, how can you do that in a building that's a hotel that all the building rooms sit stacked on top of each other? Now, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but I'm trying to lay the foreground for this, is that while we wanted to articulate the building, and why we did what we did was very clear, and if you look at the neoclassical designs, and if you go into and Google a neoclassical design, look, you will notice that the windows on the first street are all the same, all the same size, architectural features, all the coins that are around those windows are exactly the same. As you go up in the height of the building, the windows also stay consistent. You do not want to mix and match the windows, as you will see in our video. That's clearly a design intent per neoclassical design. Studying a neoclassical design in architecture means that you adhere to it. The state capital, capital of the United States, is a neoclassical design. They have columns, they have round columns, they have stately windows. You can look at the building and know it's a neoclassical design. Many of the cities in other states have reminisced back to the neoclassical design. Now, as I said, we moved from the center of Main Street, from that tree ring being very small, and as we progress out, 1910, and look at the swing inn, look at, across the street, and you see the bank, that's a neoclassical design. Doesn't look very much, but it's considered a neoclassical design. Color intent is just the way it is. Then as you move Third Street, you move into where the Truax Hotel was gonna go, and in his intent on that, it was a very clear intent, that it was starting out as a mercantile building in front, and then that would be a saloon, basically, think about it as 1920s where you, or 1930s where you had the saloon, and you had hotel rooms above it. And as you progress up towards Main, up to Mercedes, it changed. Mercantile, the American mercantile, and then you get into the Spanish nuances up towards Mercedes. Now, as you progress across the way back towards Santiago, you will notice that three buildings still are prominent there. There was never a building built between the Truax Building that's currently in place and the Old Town Tire Shop. That has always been a vacant lot as a storage lot for, I don't know if anybody would remember this, but a long time ago, before the Truax Building was built, it was a butcher shop, it was a boatyard, boat storage, boat repair. That lot right next door was considered their boat storage. And then you have, across the street, you have the roadway inn. It's been there forever. What can I say about the roadway inn? There's not much I can say. The property to the east of the roadway inn was an empty lot, and it had been empty for a long, long time. I mean, I'm talking, I've been here for 20 years, I'm sure some of you people have been here even longer, that realize those two lots that we're trying to build on were always empty. Okay? So, I'm getting to the hotel overlay. The overlay word was never mentioned to us at the time we were doing this whole entire process. All of a sudden, at the very 10th hour, they came up and said, "We need the overlay." And I asked what the overlay meant. Well, they meant that the original design for that area would have been commercial buildings, which would have meant that four stories, three stories, if you went to four, you had to have parking on your site. Now, the three-story buildings would have, yes, granted, there would have been multiple buildings. However, this building space that we purchased has no prior historical buildings to reference back to. Now, in order to build, and if you go anywhere in the states, but let's concentrate here, if you go anywhere in here, this building does articulate ever so slightly, ever so nicely, and again, I'm gonna start the video in about two seconds. I want you all to please look at this with open minds, and I want to rebuttal some of the statements later on, but I want to start the video right now, so I present it.
Hello, I'm Steve Kim, developer of the Temecula Resort and Spa. It is strange to find that Temecula, a beautiful city that attracts more than 2 million tourists every year, doesn't have five-star hotels. Therefore, the city has put a lot of effort to accommodate a luxury hotel in Old Town. I'm very honored to be the owner of this project, and I believe that not only me, but all neighbors and citizens will be proud. I promise to put all my passion and effort into making the Temecula Resort and Spa a destination that many people want to visit.
Okay. So, as you can see, we not only did what was asked of us, we incorporated what they said into this. The articulation is, well, let me first back up. The hotel rooms are 400 to 450 square feet per room. Those are some of the largest rooms, even larger than Pachanga House. The income, just the income alone to the city of Temecula is in excess of $10 million in TOT, based on this hotel. Based at a 70% occupancy at 210 rooms, you're still gonna be making somewhere around $10 million in Temecula taxes. That's not including what the resident, or the, excuse me, the guest spends in town. Inside this area that you will see is that you have, yes, we did talk about the Goat &amp; Vine, who does extremely well, no problems whatsoever. The new one, the Wine &amp; Tea Boutique. Margaritas. Margaritas has been struggling for years based on the premises that there was always gonna be a hotel in her back door. Never happens. Happens yet. We don't know when it will or what will be there. We don't know when it will or what we, we'd be there. So, and staying in, in the south end, when you come into the north, there is a lot of activity up there. You've got the hotels that are up there in that area, you've got Springfield, you've got Embassy Suites, you've got, and you've got on Marino Drive, there's a couple hotels as well as there. Down in the south end, there is nothing. There is no hotel. Across the street, you have the Stampede. Stampede draws a lot of people, young people that attend that space. So, that part is what we're trying to bring down there. We're trying to bring the populace down there. The tourism generated by this luxury hotel will produce more income for all the outlined hotel vendors, all, such as the wine bars, the Mexican restaurant, Bailey's, you name it. And on top of that, we're providing a hundred and thirty-nine E V charging stations inside our garage, which can be utilized by locals other than guests. They come in, register up and get in. So, it's not like we're not trying to be the good neighbor. And oh, by the way, for the last two years, I don't know if everybody really knows this, but out of the generosity to Mr. Kim, from Mr. Kim to the city, allowed them to turn that gravel lot into a parking lot, free of charge, no charge from him to the city. And that was because of his faith and he wanted to be a good citizen. He established that fact that he was trying to be a good citizen. So, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew, who's going to talk about some of the specifics that were in the design criteria, and then I'll come back afterwards.
Mike, can you put their presentation on the screen, the PDF?
I have a PDF here. Can you? Oh, there we go. Hi. Hi, my name is Andrew Kill at One Stop Design. I'm the project architect. I have worked on this project over two years now. That while we are going through eight different plan review, that we work with the staff closely and trying to respond all their comments diligently. And basically, we have six key issues. Thank you. So architectural design, which is a neoclassic style, and fifty linear fit of architectural expression that Steph mentioned, and swimming pool location, location, locating hotel lobby facing street, and retail store on Second Street, cannon effect, and building interaction with pedestrian on street level. We first submitted our, the first proposal on, in January of two thousand and twenty-two, which was a Spanish-style architecture, and we got comment back, and it wasn't going to be a work with a tall building like us. So we have responded, changed it to neoclassical design, which the neoclassical revival design on the left side of the, the photos that I have is directly copied from the specific plan, and right hand side is some of the reference that we found, which is more than four, five-story buildings of a neoclassical style. And your classical-style building component is composed with the base, middle, and top. We have large blocks of limestone and deep mortar base, a joint on the base, and in the middle, we have play with lots of detailed ornament, with the smooth surface stock wall, door window moldings, and balconies with the decorative wrought iron railings, and accent pilaster columns, and coins all around the corner. And on top has accent pediment. It's, it contributes to variation of the roof line, variation that we are trying to achieve, on top of differing the parapet height from here to there. And building facade exceed fifty linear fit. It, the specific plan says, the architectural expression, character, and roof line made up of various smaller building facade in our neoclassic, you know, volume messing of the project. I really don't know how we're going to achieve that various smaller building facade. But we found out, another section talks about commercial block building size and messing standard. It talks about on the corner lot, and it has to design with the two facade of equal architectural expression. The equal architectural expression on the two facades of it. So it is not various of a smaller facade. That's what I understood. And the other section talks about it, it permitted to compose of one dominant volume, the one dominant volume, not various smaller architectural expression. With that, we came up with the same architectural expression, but we tried to undulate their wall, and we recessed the wall in and out to create more interesting look of architecture. This is on the first street side, and we have a second street and front street with the same, the language that we are using. And it is all around the building design that we applied. And this is the same, the shot that Scott showed. We have a minimum of twelve inches of indentation, two, two feet of indentation. When we had a pediment and pilaster wall, the column meets with the walls of it. And this is the, that way that we did on the elevation side of it, and the top portion was the, the seminar that we had on the May, and end of the May that we had the fourth steering committee comment, and this is the undulation that we tried to put, and this is our final proposal of the project. On the second street, that we had the same, the undulation played, and on the I fifteen side of the freeway, we treated as same as all the other side of building elevation. So it is a same language and same quality goes throughout the building. And swimming pool location. This is the, the view standing on the swimming pool and directly looking at I fifteen. And by the way, our swimming pool deck is thirty foot above ground level. So from there, what you see is what that view that you have. We even did the swimming pool location study, that shade study, which the Scott mentioned. It is done, and we have studied alternate pool location, which was similar to what Scott was suggesting on the front side of Second Street, and which that puts our guest room directly to above I fifteen. It creates noise, and we just, you just have to look at I fifteen directly from your guest room. What we at least have proposed was that pool deck was giving a little bit of a buffer, so your guest room is away from the freeway. And when you put that swimming pool close to Wedding Garden, and two activities and functionality crashes. The Wedding Garden has to be calm and quiet, but swimming pool always have activity on it. So that was a reason why we chose the location that we have proposed. And hotel entrance, the study that we have done this as well, we chose the first street because of a, when you put that porcoche, the entrance of the drive-in, that front street and your second street is too narrow. And second street, even, even that is narrow, but weight, elevation difference from the south and, south end to the north end is about six, seven feet. So it is not desirable to have a hotel entrance there. When we have this first street hotel entrance like this, that we are, you know, chipping off quite a bit about floor area, which, that we are providing volumes and the meeting rooms that will just accommodate one thousand people, you know, to be our full-service hotel. So that's why we didn't go this route. And second street retail store that Steph mentioned, yes, we only have one thousand square foot of a retail store. The reason that we have was we started with twelve hundred fifty square foot of a retail store with a long stretch of the retail as much as possible. And that, you know, that green portion of the top, the labeled room is transformer vault and electrical room. It's pair, you have to have electrical room right next to the transformer vault. Transformer vault wasn't there, but we got to have it per Edison Company. And later on, that we, we found out, we have to have a fire sprinkler room right in the middle of that second street side of it because of our water supplier, that the rental water district, and they were, they don't serve any of the water for D C D A to the, the fire lane side. It has to be on the street side. So that was a last minute change that we made on the, the first part of this year. So therefore, we have, you know, one thousand square foot of retail store, and we like to have as much retail store space over there, but it is all limited by the requirements of utility companies, and we really don't have any control over. Cannon effect. We had a concern with the cannon effect on Second Street side, and since our building and TruX office building is right next together, and it may create a cannon effect over there. So that was a reason why we, we had, up to February, we had that portion of the, the west side of the hotel towers projecting, projecting out about a ten foot there, and but we pushed that hotel tower in another ten feet to create, mitigate the cannon effect. And when you look at the plan view, this is what it is, and you know, when you see that, just, you know, light pink area, that was area that we pushed back in. And now it is eighty feet in between. And one thing that I want to point out in here is that our building height, even though it is ninety-one feet, when you, when you calculating and including all this, the high point of the pediment, it is. But from the front street side to the, the east of the second street side, we have a fourteen feet of elevation difference there. So when you basically measure the building height at the, the east of the second street side, our top of the parapet building is seventy-three feet, and what we have measured that TruX office building, what they have now for the four-story building is sixty feet. So it is about thirteen foot difference in height. So you, you're talking about seven foot, seven-story building and four-story building, and it seems like a lot, but as a matter of fact, it is only thirteen foot difference in building height. So this is what we have proposed, and now that I like to have Jennifer to address the pedestrian interaction around the building on the street level more detailed. It is in response to the comment under Steph's report. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Jones. I'm the owner of Immersed Media, and I've had the privilege of collaborating on the design with the Temecula Resort and Spa team for the past few months, for the three-D rendered video that you just saw, and some of the design elements on the facade. I've been involved in several development projects in this area the last decade. I was also a resident of Temecula in the nineteen nineties. It's thrilling to witness how Temecula has grown into a must-visit destination. Tonight, I want to delve into an essential aspect of the Temecula Resort and Spa project, the pedestrian experience and the building's relationship to the street. I've worked closely with the Temecula Resort and Spa team on this very issue. So first, we're, there were first several staff comments regarding the lack of pedestrian experience. To address those concerns, we worked, we worked with the team to add additional outdoor dining options on the ground floor of the gallery on First Street. The dining, the outdoor dining creates a lively space that beckons locals and tourists alike. The sight of people sitting at the tables enjoying their meals outside acts as an invitation for passersby to explore the resort and what it has to offer, which you can see up here on this rendering, you have ground and second floor. It will transform the First Street into a vibrant hub of activity, elevating the pedestrian experience. Instead of merely walking through, people are enticed to explore and engage with the community. The second-story gallery offers an open-sky dining experience, while the street level enables diners to sit amongst elegant archways and columns. One of my favorite design elements is the column portico at the entrance, a design feature that serves as more than just an entrance, it's an invitation. Imagine walking by and feeling drawn into a realm of grandeur and elegance. The portico is setting the tone for an elevated experience and community engagement. We're transforming this building from a structure into a destination. In our use of neoclassical design principles, we prioritize harmony and balance. These aren't just aesthetic, aesthetic choices. The symmetry and proportionality serve as a visual language that resonates with our innate appreciation for beauty. We also added benches to enhance the pedestrian experience per the staff's recommendations. Next, I want to talk about the Second Street. I just talked about that. The Second Street retail area is set to showcase a flower shop catering to the diverse needs of the local community-- Catering to the diverse needs of the local community, resort visitors and the resort staff itself. We were very careful not to add bars or gift shops that compete with the mini stores already in Old Town. The benches and flower beds around the building will serve as more than functional elements. They will be an integral part of the public experience. And let's not overlook the balstres and balconies. Far from mirror decorations, these features serve as social platforms that blur the lines between public and private spaces. Enriching the public realm. Classical motifs infuse the structure with a sense of timeless, timelessness. Offering an emotional and historical depth that significantly enriches the guest experience. By integrating these neoclassical elements and the public amenities, we are elevating the building into an experience. A luxurious retreat that not only appeals to the senses, but also the emotions. In conclusion, this is not just a building. It's an excellent opportunity to elevate the entire Old Town community. Transforming Temecula tourism to new heights and creating an unparalleled experience in Old Town. As a professional, we have done our best while collaborating with the city staff. But we are open to constructive ideas. Thank you for listening and I'm excited about what we can achieve together here.
So as you can see, by our design changes in the last couple of weeks. We've actually taken what staff has said to heart. We didn't say we didn't and won't do what they said. We just said we needed time to think about how to do it and how to do it correctly. And in doing so, I feel at the end of the day, this picture, let's see, how do we get this back up here? Can I get this back up? Anyway.
Can we get the presentation put back up, please? Mike?
Okay. We were right and you were right. So we're all right. The. Park benches weren't there. The ambiance of the floral arrangements around the base of the building wasn't there at the time. This building was in, shall we say, flux and limbo. And architectural design means one thing, you're constantly designing, you're never stopped at one end. At the end of the day, when that thing is even built, you're never stopped. You're always looking to change designs, patterns, options. And the thing about it is, is that contrary to what was told and mentioned, we did. When it was asked for us to move the swimming pool, we did locate the swimming pool and we did present it as an option. When, same thing goes for the articulation. Clearly states what we could do. And if you can look at this building again, at this design. Yeah, there's a chance that we could probably kick it in another couple of feet. Take out another two feet on the, the hotel rooms above. You know, but again, the hotel experience will be done by dramatic lighting, up lights like we have. Which will be in allowance through the Palomar lighting program. It's three thousand K, soft lights, we're fine. There is no light study that we have to get permitted to do. As long as we maintain that light system. Now, as far as the windows go, the option for the windows is, guys, we live in Southern California. You know, in order to have those windows open. Means that there has to be a huge, shall we say, maintenance issue with air conditioning. Conditioned air inside that space would be, have to be monitored the minute you opened a window. The minute you left the door open, there's gotta be a monitoring system that reads that. Cal Green does not allow you to do certain things like this. And that's one of the things that we have to understand. Is that we're not just held by the city standards, we are held by a greater power, which is Cal Green. Everybody knows Cal Green is the bible of certain things. And so in doing so, the articulation of the windows. We struggled with that one and we decided to leave them as a fixed window. But they're not opaque, they're clear. So as you can see by this video here or this picture here, the backlight's are shining through it. This is the nighttime view, of course, but yes, it still will provide an interesting passerby pedestrian experience. I personally don't quite understand the, the, the ambiance of a pedestrian experience. Other than the fact is more being a background, is my structural engineering background. Is that I am keen and sensitive to art and art deco and the design of buildings. So I personally would sit there and spend hours. But the avid person was just gonna walk by and go, oh, that's pretty. Or this now, that first area of walking into the dining room. Will actually, actually make them walk into the dining room area. It's no problem hiking into the dining room area. The, the question that we had and we continue to have is the. The Old Town specific plan is semi considered to be the, not semi, is considered to be the bible of all things. Thou shalt do it this way, no other change. As you well know, it's all up to interpretation, but interpretation is a collaborative sense of direction. When asked a question, what do you think is wrong? How do you think we could fix it? We're asking for an input. We're not saying, well, it's in the book. Or it's, you know, we already showed you what we want. Well, sometimes that doesn't work. Sometimes a sit down meeting that is not so. And that's the problem that I have is that we're so tied and fearful. That if I tell you that I want you to design it this way and you design it. And something happens, the first thing that somebody's gonna do in the state of California. Is gonna sue that person who told them that's okay to do. We're not that way. Contrary to popular belief, we're here to help enhance that area. Now, the problem is also, if you consider this. Is that coming into Old Town from the north, getting off at Santiago or getting down by the Texas, or the Shell gas station. And you're driving up Front Street towards this area. Yeah, you lose a lot of visual cues that we, we are accustomed to seeing. Quite honestly, one of the cues would be the TruX Hotel or TruX Building, which is an icon of its own at that location. And then as you move a little farther north, comes into view is the City Hall. Now, as you're driving down I fifteen, heading north on I fifteen. The visual cues that you see will now be dominated by a hundred foot building. I'm pretty sure nobody realized how tall a hundred foot building was gonna be until they saw one. It's massive. And in order to maximize the space, because, think about it this way. I spend seven million dollars on a piece of property, I need to make my maximum return on that property. In doing so, what do I do? I either build more rooms, larger parking spots to accommodate. And we started out with, at one time we were at three hundred seventy-five rooms, we whittled it down. And by also in the code. The specific plan says that the first floor is ten foot to the build two line, back of the build two line. So your face is ten feet back. So that means that sidewalk is twenty feet from curb to the face of your building. Now, everything above the first floor could have been brought back out to the build two line. Meaning that we were in a rights or we were in specific plan. To actually bring that building back out to the build two line and go straight up. We chose not to. We kept everything back ten feet from the build two line. Complete perimeter of that thing is ten feet plus all the way around. When you get on Second Street, the curve, Mercedes curve, as we all know it, is that. One of the things that was a challenge for, and I want to talk about my past history. In building the TruX Building was that corner. As you can see, we had the bump outs that were there. And at one point in time, we had the whole city staff over there, I think Luke was there as well. And as we were all standing on the corner and then as we were standing there, a young lady, an older lady. Cut the corner and almost hit us standing there. That's why that bump out is right there in the front of the TruX Building. Now, as you're heading north on Mercedes, everybody cuts that curve. I don't think anybody in here is gonna say, no, I never do. That's what happens, everybody cuts that curve right there. So when we were, when I was looking at the drawing designs, I realized that we had our building too close to that curve. Again, that's why we set it back another ten feet. And also when you're commenting that on Second Street, where we have SoCal Edison and our electrical room. And now we have the Fire riser room, Command Cinder. The SoCal Edison room was required to be where it's located for two reasons. Ease in access for SoCal Edison to put the transformer in. The second one is they said. Those are the two reasons they gave us, we fought hard and fast for it. And there was nowhere else to put it on the property. We had to put it in a location where it's at. Same thing with electrical. We weren't allowed to move the electrical room on the other side of the building in order to accommodate more retail space. So to answer those questions and clarify those reasons is why that area is not as. Shall we say, the ambiance is not there, there's no shops. Plain and simple. We've done our best to improve the site, we've done our best to enhance the walls. We've also, now we've added the benches and tables there. So that is going to be an added experience for that area, the best we can do. I mean, if you got another idea, we're open to the idea. Then, when it comes to the space, the original time that I first started here. Is that Mr. Kim offered, was going to offer that space rent free to the local artisans. Meaning that this would have been an area that the local artisans would have been able to utilize to show their art. Like we did at the TruX Building, we, first Friday, we volunteered the first floor for every month of the year for. Let's see, two years, this ground floor. And that's what he was gonna do here. But it's not only just artisans, but it's also for musicians. We're gonna have a little area where they can come in and do that. And the same thing in the small conference rooms that we have. We were going to allow the local artists to come in there and perform. They don't have really a pleasant area to do that, but this is what we're trying to do. And in doing so, his giving back to the community is exemplary. I don't see a lot of people who build a hundred and seventy million dollar hotel. That's willing to give square footage away for five dollars a square foot for free. Just doesn't happen. But Mr. Kim has, over the last two years with this whole entire project. Has gracefully donated the land for parking, which was greatly needed at the time during pandemic. Or even now, when, especially when Stampede has their summer events. The building facades that exceed fifty feet should be, should incorporate varying architectural expressions. Well, in doing so, that's what we tried to do. Every fifty feet. Now again, remember, this is called an overlay system. So the assumption is that there was a building right there because the property lots, back in the day, they were fifty feet by one fifty. Or twenty-five feet by one fifty. So in doing that twenty-five feet, that owner had six thousand nine hundred square feet to build a house. Or a business next door. And again, they had like three or four feet offset from the property line to the next door house. That came in in the early forties, fifties with the offset of space between the buildings. So back then, they could build right up next to your door, no problem. That would have been the case had we, again, as I said earlier, had we had the space. Already designed with buildings that we were destroying. If we had destroyed those buildings, we would have taken that architectural element for that first floor. And made it to the first floor, everything else would have been a hotel. The neoclassical design, as you can see by this picture, all the windows emulate the same on the first two levels. As you go up, now you notice each one of these has a dome. And they're articulated with all of the gingerbread that you want to go around them, the cornices, the finished corners and the whole bit. Then as you go up, you hit more of a traditional rectangular window or a large window, six by eight windows. And we also have patio sliding doors on that floor as well. All the hotel rooms on the wedding venue are also opening patio doors onto the wedding venue. So all the wedding party can sit there. I don't know, did she have? Let's see, do you have? I'm trying to get to that picture. So imagine that you're having a wedding on the third floor in that location. And you walk straight out of your hotel room, straight into the wedding venue. No other disruption other than you. And we did that, so it would be private. You're spending, as we all know, the local area is two years in the waiting for a wedding venues. The wedding planners that we've talked to, that I know personally, have told me that it's a two year waiting list. For anything in the winery, wine countries, anywhere else. And this is gonna be available seven days a week. And so is the rooms. So that also draws in another group of people into Old Town as well. It's not relying just on the visitors. We can now create a large business right there that supplies and supports the local city. The shop that we were incorporating is the flower shop and we, again, we talked about that. And the flower shop is going to mainly support the hotel. Fresh flowers, where Mr. Kim is from in South Korea, is that all the hotels, all the luxury hotels. Change out the flowers daily, that's not, and this is part of his traditions as well. That he wanted to bring to the inside elegance other than pachanga. A lot of our clients that we've talked to and I've talked to in the past, dealing with the TruX Hotel. Is that a lot of the clients don't want to bring their parties of two hundred. Into pachanga because they don't want to have the conference there because they don't want to have their people missing. This gives them another avenue to put two hundred people into a conference and outside the gambling venue. Again, it's a plus for the city, a large plus for the tourists. And a large plus for the local residents and the local merchants. That's exactly what we're trying to do. Now, the pool location in the specific plan, it states that if you're a five star hotel. You do not have to have a swimming pool. So if the vote comes down and says, you know, something about the swimming pool, something's wrong with it. And let me back up on that one. Everybody knows what the wind is like in the city of Temecula in the afternoon. Okay? Everybody knows it blows from the west to the east. And everybody was concerned when they first told me, even the secretary of City Hall told me. That we should get rid of the swimming pool, so because of the carbon monoxide poisoning. And I said, seriously, this is, it's kind of funny, I said, because in the afternoon, all the wind blows towards those houses across I fifteen. And I would be more concerned about the residents over there getting a lot more of the carbon monoxide than I would a person sitting at this hotel. We did the buffer, we put the buffer, the cabanas, got rid of that open space and divided it with the buffers. So as far as, again, we listened to what you said, we incorporated what we had to do to make it work. We are not here to say thou shalt do it our way or we'll just walk away. No, we are here for the long haul. We have done a lot, we want to continue to do a lot. And I think, no, I don't think, I know that we did the very best we could. But we're also open to dialogue on some of the ideas. If you need some more additional ideas, we'll listen to your ideas. But we're, it, it got to the point where we were so in, out, in, out. What do we do? How do we do this? It got to the point where we, we took a chance, put our foot down and said, we want to go to public, the planning commission. That's what we did. We spent a lot of time and effort getting this presentation to a point where you now understand it. It's not the San Clemente, Santa Barbara, it's not that mission style look, this is a neo- This is a neoclassical design, plain and simple. According to the specs, according to the gospel of the Old Town specific plan, we fit within that. We fit within the 100-foot overlay. We fit with the articulation of the building. We fit with the pedestrian experience. If not, please tell me. We'll put more. I really had a lot of rebuttals and comments, but I think what we've done is I've been genuinely honest with you. I haven't gone off strip, you know, I didn't go to my script and say, you know, follow these rules or else. We're here with open hands, willing to participate, and willing to be listening. We don't want to hear an answer saying denied. We don't, and for reasons that we don't know why. You know, architectural pleasing is to the eye. It's not, you know, you and I are not going to live there, but we have to make sure that it's appropriate for the city of Temecula, appropriate for Old Town. We understand that this is a cornerstone entering into Old Town. I had that in mind the day I started working on this. I wasn't going to let it be a box. Thank you very much for your time and effort, and greatly appreciate your listening to me expound on this. I normally don't like public speaking. As you probably can tell, I do. But the part of it is that I couldn't sell ice to an Eskimo unless I really believed in the project. I delved my heart into this project. I followed the rules. I followed the guidelines. We set forth, and all we're doing is asking for a shot. As you well know, just because you say approved, doesn't mean it's entitled. Doesn't mean anything other than once we get your blessing, it then goes to another level. During that whole time, we could still be doing changes. It's once you get the entitlement, then once you get your permit drawings, then if you do changes, it's a minor mod or a major mod. We want to get that done now and go. We are ready to shovel-ready that property. That's what we want to do. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions of the applicant? No?
Okay, Mr. Kim, Mr. Kim would like to say a word.
Okay, come on up.
Hi, dear planning commissioners, this is Steve Kim. I was actually, was planning to come out and speak, okay? But just give a little history. I'm a just entrepreneur and very successful in IT ventures, as you know. And, you know, so I set up the, my design office for OneStyle Venture because when I started developing the resorts in, in, you know, the Santa Corita. And it's very hard to, with 20, 30 outside consultants and to visualize what they're doing it. So I set up the office in there, about three years, and have the, like, you know, 3D, 3D design tool called Rabbit. I hired all the engineers in-house. And so, you know, when I had a problem and issues with the, you know, the Santa Corita, and I talked to the engineer, what we should do, and they pointed out the Temecula. So I hired the, engaged with the brokers and came out here, and it was beautiful city. We, I thought I could build some, you know, hotels in the resort, I mean, in the, in the winery, okay? And I found they were capable, two rooms per acre. So we went into the business city and met with Christian Dampco. And she was very kindly pointed out, there was actually a two-acre lot you can build, you know, eight stories high, as long as you accommodate a thousand, you know, spaces for conference and five-star hotels. I had no ideas you can build, put all those requirements into, you know, in two acres. I was developing in Santa Corita 30-acre lots in one of the nine-hour golf courses. But since I had a design team, we came back and put together the plan. And, you know, that plan was to actually have the entrance from first to second, or second, and that's where the lobby is. Okay, we got two bathrooms in and, you know, 300, over, 400 parking spaces, all that in the building. So we articulate all that and present to the staff in September 2021. They give you a lot of setbacks, fire lane setback for 30 feet on the back, setbacks, fire requirements and all that. But I think here they push back on pool locations where it's supposed to be and where we got to have that pool crochet should be. And since there's nothing, you know, major comments back, negative, and then I acquired the land after that. Because I was assured that city really wanted this, right? Because that's very John the High Rise, offer the tax benefits. And I, I just went around about all the area, about 23 hotels and motels. None of the single ones quality and holiday, even have a single restaurant you can have a breakfast with. So I was really convinced this is why the city really wanted this. And I was convinced I can build and meet the plan. That's why I started with that. And then worked diligently with the staff, and it wasn't, it wasn't easy, okay? I wish we really had the kind of sit-down meeting and collaborated, brainstorming, but it was almost impossible, okay? If you pick up the phone, no one answered the phones, never returned the call. I don't know you're aware of it or not. So I wanted to have the open meeting, so I came down here on December 2022, met with, you know, Aaron. And I said, I want to have a meeting, an open meeting, and said, tell us what we are lacking. And I couldn't have the meeting until September 2023. We came down and met with Luke and Scott, Aaron's and all. So it was just not interactive. But we, since we have a team, whatever they commented that, we instantly come up with the solutions. And when we turn it into revision, it takes two months to get anything back. That's why it took so long, okay? I thought I'd try to understand that as a process. We thought we could have the meeting on June 21st because we thought we done everything. Okay, I met with four, you know, steering committee, city council steering committee. Swimming pool was an issue, so we presented that why cannot be done swimming pool? And there's nothing, you know, they say, oh no, you cannot do that, okay? But since there was actually still animosity with the staff that we got to do more inhalations and on, canyon effect, we can make address that that pushed back the meeting from June 21st to September 6th today. I thought the city is going to fully support this plan, okay? And I was so shocked to find that they're actually going back for all the things we addressed before, okay? You know, I'm not here to try to make money. This is my life. This is my passion, okay, my last passion. I think it really do good for the city and community. Look at all the street shops. They are very slow during the week. There's nothing going on, okay? Having this one, you know, we got several hundred people staying here for longer terms. I have a lot of group meetings coming in, five, six, seven hundred people staying in every day. Imagine, it's going to just really revive the city, Temecula and everywhere. It's big. It's hard to accept as it is, right? But if I know if there's an issue, it's the magnitude of the size, then should, should put, never put a zone saying you cannot build eight-story-high building, okay? So we tried to, every little detail to fit it into the Old Town specific plan. Every single one possible, whatever that staff says, we jump at it, okay? And we showed that to them. It takes two months to get any feedback. That's why we spent two years get to this far, okay? So, anyway, I'm just, you know, pleading you, and what I had to go through, right? You know, I came from South Korea about over 40 years with bare hands. And United States was, I could do this successfully because it's a fair country and justice alive. Okay, I hope you understand what we've done, but I still saying, any specific, can you do this? Of course we do, with reasons, okay? We are here to accept any feedbacks, criticism, anything, please, okay? I think really this is for big changes in Old Town and Temecula. I've been here many times, but there's a many really nice upscale restaurants, right? You got nice spas and, you know, three-minute buffet restaurant, international cuisines, and you could all come and enjoy, okay? I want us to throw some concerts every weekend, right, for local artists, okay? So, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, any questions of applicant right now, the applicant?
No, I'd rather get the feedback from our residents and anybody else who wants to speak first.
Any other questions of applicant? Okay, all right, then we'll go ahead and have, we have some requests to speak. And we'll start with Glenn Airy, followed by Alex Madrid. Hello, welcome.
I'm part of the, thank you for listening to me. I've been part of the community for 25 years. I moved from Florida. And I think the hotel is a good opportunity to experience, wow, I'm not used to public speaking, so don't mind me. So I think a lot of people want to experience something like this. They have to go to the hotel, they have to go to the casinos or Pachanga. Wow. It's the first time in public speaking.
You're doing fine. Thank you.
So anyways, I think it'll be a great addition to Temecula. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alex Madrid?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Alex Madrid. I'm with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And I live in this area. I've heard earlier in the earlier meeting, we've been here 40 years, raised my kids. So, you know, we've, we've worked and recreate in the vicinity. I believe that the impact by the environmental impact of the project, the city should require the project to be built with contractors that hire local, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship program. Workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled Putting California on the High Road, a Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030, the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reductions. Recently, the State of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill 2011, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain sightings, affordability, and development standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have Rocky Hale, followed by Joseph Rahal.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello. I was just gonna say I've lived here for about 21 years and I've seen Old Town change, as well as the rest of Temecula. But this project, it just does not fit in that two-and-a-half-acre piece. It's, it's like shoehorning it in there. And I, I know that they got to make the most of the square footage and, you know, and make it a profitable thing for the city as well. But it's just, I don't know, something about it just looks wrong in that space. And I'm not sure how it would affect the existing businesses like Dan's Feed and Seed, the roadway inn. I mean, what, what are those people going to be thinking when they're being towered over? And the canyon effect, I know they're trying to mitigate that, but I can't see it being anything other than a canyon. That's kind of just what I wanted to say, just real short and sweet, but give it some thought.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Joseph?
Hi, my name is Joseph Rahal. I'm one of the brokers that helped Mr. Kim acquire the lots here. I've been a long time-
You can speak right into the mic.
I've been a long-time resident here, and I've, I've loved watching Temecula grow. When we, when he first called, he was looking in, in the wine country area, and he realized that it was two rooms per acre and he wanted to build a much larger project. So we thought, hey, let's go check in the city and see what they have available. So when we came in, we were greeted, you know, graciously by the Economic Development Manager, Christine Dampco. And after discussions with her, she, she pointed us to the hotel overlay where it was already, you know, planned for hotels and for an eight-story hotel. You know, this demonstrates the synergy between what the city envisions for future developments and the proposal in front of us today. The fact that this location aligns with our city's strategic development plans ensures that this project is not only beneficial, but is also forward-thinking. The economic benefits, to mention a few, with the creation of a 355-room, seven-story hotel, we're looking at the creation of a large number of jobs, from construction workers to hotel staff, from restaurant servers to spa therapists. The employment opportunities that arise from such development are countless. This means a stronger local economy, increased local spending, and a boost in our city's revenue. Additionally, the conference facilities and ballrooms are a signal that our city is ready for bigger and better events. This isn't just a hotel. It's a hub for networking, for business conferences, weddings, and so much more. It confirms our city on the map as a destination, drawing in visitors and elevating our local and national profile. The amenities being proposed from the full-service spa, restaurants, bars, retail outlets, to the workout facility, promise to be some of the best in our region. They will not just serve the hotel's guests, but also our community members becoming a community hub and centerpiece for leisure and relaxation. In conclusion, this hotel is more than just a structure. It's a beacon of progress. It's a testament to our city's ambition and dedication to smart growth and our promise to offer the very best to our residents and visitors. I fervently urge the council today to approve this development plan and let's usher in a new chapter of prosperity for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that, come on up? You can turn that in after you speak to our secretary.
Hi, my name is Patrick Schneider. I'm here with my wife, Jan. We've been residents of Temecula for 25 years. We own two businesses in Old Town. The Temecula Lavender Company on Old Town Front Street, heads are nodding, and the new Corbeau Wine and Tea House in the TruX Building with my daughter Reagan Schneider, who's the youngest winemaker in the valley, so to speak. One of the things that really occurs to me is that, you know, as we've gone through the pandemic and we've looked at the economics, you know, in Old Town, there's been a sort of downturn just recently. And that's, that's just, you know, ebbs and flows of business. And that's, that's just, you know, ebbs and flows of business. But the other thing that we've really begun to understand is that with the, with Corbeau Wine and Tea House, which is more of a luxury situation, we're starting to see more draw from Los Angeles and from, from San Diego to like enjoy a little bit higher-end stuff. Whether it's hotels in, in wine country, we're starting, we live in wine country, we absolutely see all the economics that are going there. And so it really starts to, I asked the question to myself and maybe to, to the commissioners here, why would we send all the luxury out to the wine countries when we can have some luxury here in, in, in Temecula? And so I, I just really want everybody to consider the economic aspect of, of this for the Old Town businesses, to have people, you know, staying in Old Town, walking in Old Town, enjoying all the amenities of Old Town without having to have to drive, you know, in. I think that there is an aspect of that. And also, I think that there's actually a safety aspect, a safety aspect to like not driving and like we talk a lot about pedestrian, and that's, that's fantastic. But, you know, if you go down Second Street to Mercedes, it's very dark there. And that would be fantastic if this was all lit up with, you know, with this, this, this project. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity, not only for the city, for this project, but also for, you know, the ancillary aspects of this with all the businesses that are associated with Old Town. And maybe help us get, you know, out of this sort of economic slump to try and bring people in. So I absolutely support this project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Okay, all right. Go ahead and, yes. Staff?
Do we have a, what do you ask me, sorry?
A rebuttal to--
It would be for the applicant to be able to provide closing comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the applicant want to provide any closing comments?
Thank you for the opportunity for the closing comments. I want to repeat and emphasize what he said was, Mr. Snyder said, is that it's not only an opportunity for us to build the hotel to make money, it's an opportunity for the Temecula Old Town to grow and to be a beacon of luxury. Instead of having to go out to the Old Town, excuse me, go out to the wineries where everything shuts down at nine o'clock, you go to your room, nothing. Here, it's gonna be a lively key point on the south end of town. And yes, I wanted to ref, uh, make a point for this gentleman here that said, roadway inn is roadway inn. Dan's Feed and Seed has been there for, it's an icon, it's been there forever. Till somebody walks in, takes, gives the gentleman that owns Dan's Feed and Seed $10 million, he's not gonna go away. And it's a local for all of the local ranchers to come and get their feed within the Rancho Vista area, the Rancho California area. So even though we emphasize the, it was a difficult way to how to make that pedestrian-friendly. And that's the rebuttal that I want to say is that we did the best we could. I mean, you're sitting on the second floor of this colonnade, the gallery, and you're overseeing Dan's Feed and Seed, the big hay bales out in the backyard, you know, the tractors coming in and off loading hay, corn, whatever. You know, it's not a view, but the view is farther outreach-ing, is looking at the Palomar Mountains, looking at the mountains. And the same thing goes with our wedding venue. We could have put the wedding venue, made it smaller, but the view is going to be spectacular up on that third floor. And that's what we're trying to emphasize. I greatly appreciate working with staff, Scott, Luke, I've known Ann Stewart. I've known these guys for years. We've had our arguments, we've had our concerns. But at the end of the day, the point is, is that we only want one thing. And we want to be right, we want it to be right. And if that means we argue a little bit, we argue. But we're not looking to just say, no, we don't like it and go away. We are here to work with you to get it done correctly. If that's what it takes, that's what we'll do. So please, consider the options, as everybody said, is that we are looking at a new period in our careers, in our lifetimes. Temecula's value states very clearly right directly behind you, old traditions, new opportunities. We need to establish those opportunities. If you reject this thing, what are you saying to the rest of the, the community? You don't, we don't like it and go away. That's not new opportunities, we're trying to work with the new opportunities. We're trying to bring in jobs, we're trying to bring in vitality into Old Town. Someplace where, other than the Pachanga Restaurant or the Pachanga Hotel, where people don't really want to go there and spend money, but they want to have a good time. We feel that we're gonna have that good time, we're gonna have that elegant space. We'll have a space in Old Town that we can handle a 300 conference, state of Temecula, or whatever, Rotary, things like that will be local instead of having to go to Pachanga. And we'll benefit, sure, like everybody else, but we will be a premier sponsor to all of those things, just like Pachanga is. And it's a benefit to the city of Temecula, Old Town Temecula, to realize that. And again, we're here to work with you, we're not here to be adversaries. Thank you very much for your time.
You, okay. Any questions of staff or applicant at this time?
I got questions.
Okay.
Just one quick question for staff, and after questions, then we come our dialogue, right? Because I wanted, I've got two different things going on that I want to address, so.
Not, no discussion yet.
Yeah, okay.
Need to have questions taken care of.
So I guess just a quick question, Scott, and thanks for going back to your, your presentation there. You know, I don't, I don't pretend to be an architectural, you know, specialist or anything like that. So I rely on the input that you have, which I appreciate. And specific plans exist for a reason. And I think that's one of the strengths that Temecula has is that we have really thought out the development and everything that we've done. In your presentation, you, you laid out some challenges or deficiencies with the current plan as, as proposed. Some of those seem to be addressed through the applicant's presentation there. Was anything that they presented today new that we had not seen or that you had not seen yet prior? Because some of the communication concerns, obviously, is that, I mean, it, it has been going on for some time. It appears on one hand that, that maybe they're not as open to work, that they're saying they're working. So I'm, I'm, that's one area, I'm just trying to get an understanding. So was anything that they did in their presentation new information? Or does your presentation with what, with that, that list of what has fallen short still stand?
So staff had discussion with the applicant when they requested to come to Planning Commission with the understanding that no further changes will be made to the plans. Because against what the applicant said, what's, what is approved at Planning Commission, since it doesn't have to go to city council, is the entitlement. That's, it's expected to be built. There are modifications that can happen, there's a minor modification or a major modification. Minor modifications are moving windows around, adding a window, adding a door here or there. Major modifications could be changing the paint colors of the building. If you get to a major modification, adding an extra gallery, adding outdoor patio dining, that comes back to Planning Commission. So there's things at staff level that can be handled. When I watched their presentation and when I watched the PDF slideshow, the First Street Patio Dining was adding, added, even though there doesn't show any railings or designated area or direct access from the building to the dining area. It looks like you'd have to come out on the corner of the building and then access that. The revised corner restaurant entrance, how it's more recessed, was not on our plans. The revised main hotel entrance was not our plans, we're showing the benches. Staff doesn't feel that benches are activating the street in the way that we would expect on a building of that size. Also, we would have to take a look for the specific plan is there are certain maximums and minimums of entrance widths, entrance steps, entrance heights. That would not, that has not been reviewed yet. The benches and what they're calling the activation on Second Street, where the back of the house mechanical rooms are, that would need to take another look. The pool cabanas were not part of the plans. So that's just what I saw, just real quick. There may be other stuff that's there, but that's all I've seen right now.
So then safe to say that, that some of the things that they addressed as a rebuttal to the concerns that were brought forward that they presented tonight have not yet come through planning in the proper channels?
Agreed, and I would also say staff would feel that if what was proposed tonight was on the plans that came forward, staff's recommendation would not change.
Okay, I'll hold off for now, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? I did have one question. Scott, where there was a statement made that there was a difference between 73 feet and 60 feet of the two buildings, Truax and this hotel, is that true? Because if a building is 100 feet and then a building is 60 feet--
It's due to, as the applicant stated, when you're on the corner of First and Front, that's where the building reaches 91 feet to the top of the building. When you move back, there's a 14-degree grade difference between Front Street and the back of the building. So that's where the difference of the height is. In reference to the one exhibit and rendering that we shown, staff just doesn't feel it still is accurately representative of the heights of the building.
Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have with staff. Do you want to ask some questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question.
One question now.
Okay.
So there, there is, you know, from my perspective, a fair amount of new things that have been added. And so it's, it's a little bit hard to digest this right now, so I have to, I, it's a good time to ask questions. Particularly the restaurant, the outside dining. Scott kind of basically made a statement that was kind of my question is how would serve staff have ingress and egress to make service to the diners that are outside? And, you know, I know rails can be put up and all of that and the alcohol issue and, you know, that all can be taken care of, but the bigger issue is getting the food to them, so.
Sure. We have a series of a window on the First Street side of it. I don't, it, it will be good when we go to the Scott's presentation of the--
Switch over to my mics, I got the ground floor up.
That we, we do, we opened up one of the series of openings from the restaurant side to the outside dining area. So it is not going out of the corner all the way to around it. So right there, that edge of the, when we had, you have a display for the buffet, we do have a series of openings there that we can open up, couple of those openings as a door to serving out to the dining. So it is coming out of, from the inside restaurant to outside dining area. It is not going around the corner and going back.
The aggressiveness of trying to get to this meeting and accommodate the comments as quickly as we could, knowing the fact that we had a one-shot deal at this thing, is that we wanted to emphasize the fact is that we could put dining outside. We could put benches in this, it, there is no, we have no COA yet. There is, there is no, you know, agreements, no conditions of approval, you know, how many benches to put. We put the benches in there where we thought were, as our designer stated, we put them in a place of architectural emphasis and design applications. We didn't just throw a bench. And that's part of the COA is that the city will tell me that we have to have X amount of benches along Second Street. They will tell us that we have to have certain amount of benches on First and Front. Right now, there are no benches allocated in this design other than the ones we showed pictorially. Granted, you know, we took a license to kill here a little bit, but the point is, is that we attempted to show you that we're willing to, we read, we read the summary a week ago. We attempted to do what we could between now, between then and now. So we emphasize our strength is willingness to work with you.
I, I understand it, I'm just trying to, trying to understand what you presented, so.
And, and again, if you really truly look at a colonial, neoclassical design, the doors are almost like a window opening feature. The colonnades that we put, the columns that we put out at Front Street accented that area a little more. We didn't have time to present it to him, to present it to you. The, the point is, is that we want to work with the city. We don't want a negative result. We want a positive result, and we're here to preside and provide the positive re-feed from us. And what you were saying, yes. What we showed was not part of his, and again, what the staff is saying to you is that we would, no matter what we did, it was still denied. The rebuttal is that, why would you still deny it when, and automatically, you see, I would have liked to seen him say, hey, you know, that's not a bad, you know, please bring it to us, let us talk about that more. But he didn't. The first thing he said was, it wouldn't have changed if we would have still denied the project. How can you be open-minded? And the other part of this whole thing is, we've always been told, I've always been told, since I've been here since 2003, we were developer-friendly. We would help the developers build whatever it took and help them get across those hurdles. What I see now is the undeniable mistake of believing that. Clear example was that we took what he said, we took the advice, we did it. We didn't do it the right way, but we did it and we showed intent. We will now process it correctly, if we have the opportunity to do so. But to just say, no, I'm sorry, we still want to deny it. That's not fair. And I'm going on the record to say that as far as we are here to facilitate this project, not to destroy the project.
Can I, can I just say one thing really quickly?
Yes.
The staff's recommendation is for redesign, not denial.
That's what I was just gonna say.
I just want to rebut that real quick. I've not said denial once tonight, that's not what staff wants. We want, I, I'm talking. I've been misrepresented a couple of different times tonight, so I just want to go on my record. I've not said denial, I did not say if you do this or that, it'll be denial. The staff's recommendation has always been redesign. It's true, there's not a resolution for approval of the project. Staff does not feel that it meets the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. But we do want to redesign and work with the applicant to meet the development standards and produce a quality project. It's a transformative project, the city would love to see a five-star hotel. It's something that's needed in Old Town, but it needs to be the right design.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant?
I would like to ask a question to the applicant. I've heard, you know, all your, all your comments and expressing all your concerns. And I just have one question, you stated that you, this is gonna be a five-star hotel?
Yes, sir.
Who is the operator of this five-star hotel?
Mr. Kim is.
We're gonna hire the general managers and, you know, all this, you know, very experienced staff, I think there's plenty of out here, okay? So, you know, I run the golf course too, but there's, I don't go up there because it's just self-run. So we hire the really experienced staff, okay? Well-trained, and they'll be there to serve, okay? We just provide the most beautiful facility that attracts people, wow, okay? So I don't think it's really running that, you know, it's not that difficult. Because what happened with, when I bought the golf course in 2016, it was run by Trune. They had the general managers in and there was a 40-- They had the general managers in, and there was a forty maintenance crews, okay? And so, you know, then I cannot work with him because he's hired by the Truun. He won't listen to me, right? So now I got fifteen maintenance crews, and it's just ridiculous. It's very nice and clean, if you have a chance to come up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. I want to add one more thing, it wasn't addressed, that is pedestrian experience. Yeah, we could add a, you know, we don't have a space because we only have seven, eight, nine hundred people to come. We gotta accommodate for, you know, breakfast, lunch, and dinners, bars. So we can have a lot of small restaurants along the street open to the guest. But also, but think of it is, there's so many little restaurants in Old Town. There's so many bars on the Old Town, gift shops. I don't want to compete with them either. You just, if they want to enjoy our facility, you know, they can come in to the restaurant, and instead has a buffet restaurant or inside, outside. So that is intention, not... The only thing we have, the retail, is in-house, you know, run the flower shops. There's intention of that, okay? Please understand.
Thank you.
I would also like to interject one thing too in regards to your comment and your question, is that I knew that was going to come up. So you're looking to ask the question, what flagship that we're going to use? Are we going to use a Marriott? Are we going to use a Hilton? Are we going to use Best Western, whoever?
When I hear a five-star hotel.
Yeah, in order to do a five-star hotel. And, and again, it's the same thing, is that when you hire the staff, you manage the staff, and you do the same things as staff would do at a, a large international building hotel company. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. Not at all. Mr. Kim is very knowledgeable. His family is very knowledgeable in the hotel work and industry. He's done very successful in a lot of major companies and corporations, so.
Okay.
I don't think I have a worry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. We have any other questions of the applicant? Okay, any questions of staff at this time? Okay, then I think it's time to close the public hearing and have some discussion as colleagues with the information that we've received. I think, first of all, Gary and I were on that subcommittee, so I would like to hear from Gary, and I would like to say a few things coming from the subcommittee that might help.
I don't have a lot to say other than this project has come before us. We had one other opportunity to, as a subcommittee, to meet with the applicant, and that was essentially a non-meeting. We do deal with our staff every single meeting, every day of the week when we're dealing with issues. And I, as well as my colleagues, sure have a lot of confidence in what staff brings to us. And there's not one thing that Scott has done to me that tonight that would lessen any, anything that he has ever told me as far as his integrity and his ability to, to complete a project. So on behalf of staff, thank you. You did a great job, and I, at least this person is not questioning anything as far as what's been told and what hasn't. We believe you a hundred percent. That being said, I have listened to all these sides, and it's, it's apparent to me now that I've heard the rebuttals that you're willing to work with the staff, where you weren't, apparently were not before, at least that may or may not be true in your eyes. That's how I see it painted out right now, so we could disagree, but we could, that's fine. And I just don't see that that cooperation was extended before, from what I've seen tonight. But it sounds like it's coming now, and that's good. That's what we want to do. I'm sure staff wants to work with you to come up with a project that you wanted to do, that you like, that meets all of our standards. And, and with that, it seems to me that what's on the table tonight is not an approval of your project and not a denial of your project, but merely a recommendation of staff that you continue to work to address these issues that are a concern to them. I think that's a very reasonable stance on the city's part, and I'm prepared to back that up. But those are my, my thoughts.
Thank you very much, Gary. Yes, we, we met once with the applicant, and yeah, it wasn't really a fruitful meeting that I felt. And, and I think as far as staff has been concerned, they've had several meetings and, and tried to work with your team. And so one of the things, and I read it on there, was a recommendation that we made as a subcommittee that the project should not move forward to the planning commission until it was compliant. And you're here, and it's not compliant, so that's hard. You know, it's hard to, that's, that's was our recommendation. And so I don't think that as a team you're ready to be here in front of the planning commission. Like Gary was saying, you know, we have been getting information from the staff of, you know, it's not in conformance with the Old Town specific plan, and that, so our hands are tied with that, really, in making a vote. And so that's something that's important to us, that it needs to be in conformance, it needs to be compliant, need to be able to work together. I don't think that's really happened. And so I think it's really in your court, whether you want it to happen or not. And so I think the vote tonight is, you know, the recommendation is for a redesign. So if that's something that we think as a planning commission that we want to vote on or not, and that's what we're voting on. And so I think that that's what we need to do right now, and if there's any other discussion, but that, that's been our experience as a subcommittee. We've had one meeting. And we've had some meetings with staff, you know, and trying to work things, but we really haven't seen that cooperation. And right now we're discussing, the, yeah, public hearing's been closed. So comments from this end?
I have a couple of comments that, like, like my fellow commissioner said that, you know, I, I have a... I believe that staff has tremendous experience in working with applicants and working on designs and understanding architecture and understanding the importance of downtown. And, and I believe, you know, working closely with them on other projects, I believe they do have the experience and the knowledge of what true architecture is. I understand that, you know, architecture was a concern, so I really, I have a extreme confidence in staff. In addition to that, you said that there's going to be a five-star hotel. So there was, there was a couple of things that I saw in the design that I think should be addressed at the time of resubmital to staff. So in addition to the comments that staff has provided, I think there's a lack of landscape in the project. Also, I think one thing that's very important is the mechanical equipment plan. You have, the design shows the restaurants being along the street, and that's going to be a very difficult situation when you do your mechanical plan, of how the venting is going to work and how that's going to affect the facade. So a lot of that equipment, the equipment plan, the roofing plan, the, the exhaust plan for all the, all the cooking and all that, the kitchen, that's going to be a big concern while you start, while you start designing the MEPs of this plan. In addition, also AC units. How I would like for you to work with staff to identify where the AC units are going to be, what kind of AC units are going to be built in here. Because at a five-star hotel, you know, there's a big, there's central, there's multiple central units going on in each floor, in each section. So I think that needs to be detailed on the plans that you resubmit to staff. One more thing is also the mechanical plan for the pool, how it's elevated towards the rear. Also showing details of how that pool plan is going to work and where all the mechanical units are going to come in. And also provide sections and how that's working along with the street. And also the heights. You show ten-feet height on the elevations. I don't, when you show ten-feet height, you have to take into consideration the floor, inner, the inner floor, the transom. So in reality, your ceilings will be nine-foot. I don't know how many hotels or five-star have nine-foot high ceilings. So if that's also something that you want to shoot for a five-star hotel, I think you should also shoot for ten-foot high ceilings, eleven, each floor. So those are just some comments that I saw reviewing the architectural plans. And like I said, the applicant shows that he's willing to work with staff and that is also very open to working and addressing all the, all the comments that staff has provided. So in addition to staff's comments, those are my comments that I think should be addressed before it comes back to the planning commission.
Bob?
I, I can't be as elegant as an architect, so I'm not going to try to compete with that, but... I, I appreciate Mr. Kim, everything he's done for the city, what he will do in the future. I, I will say that I am not, I don't want to deny this. I do want this. I think it fits a, a need. It fits a hole that we have. I think it's good for other businesses. I think it does everything that we really want it to do. And I appreciate all the services that are, that are there. But, you know, my, my immediate feeling when I was watching your video was, boy, this would be a great building for a ten-acre spot up in the mountains. And it just, it seems just so massive. And, you know, I don't have the architectural experience to really talk about how you mitigate a canyon effect and everything, but, I mean, that's just my honest, honest opinion. It feels like it's not quite done yet. I do also appreciate the fact that you're trying to address things. I appreciate everything that you've presented here. And I, I would, you know, I'm not, my vote would not be to deny it. My vote would be to continue working at it. And I'd hope we'd be back in a month or two to, to approve a plan that will work, you know, for both the city, for you. I think one thing that you will see about the city is we want every business to be a success. And I appreciate the comments from Mr. Kim about wanting to help other businesses as well as helping his own business, and I think this, this project can do that. So I hope you, you know, everybody understands that we're, we're not looking to sit up here and just deny, deny, deny. That's, that's just not who we are. But I think we've been put into an awkward position in that we're, we're close, but we're not there. And usually, you know, what's, what's before us is, you know, all the i's are dotted, and I feel like there's some i's that are, that are not dotted. And so that's just where, where I'm at. And appreciate, you know, the details that you can, that you can put in that, that I can't put in, so.
Adam?
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with what, what my colleagues here have said, you know, and it's, it's a little bit difficult. I, I like the idea of the project. I think it would be very well-serving to Temecula. I think it'd be very well-received in Temecula. But at the same time, it needs to be done in the right way, with the right requirements of the specific plan. And that's what I was kind of alluding to earlier with Scott of, you know, if there were some minor changes here that we haven't seen. It, it does feel honestly, it's going to, we're, we're, sound weird hearing this, but a little rushed because we were trying to get to this meeting, but it's, yet it's been worked on for, for a couple of years. I mean, I, I remember meeting with the applicant. It must have been with the subcommittee at the very end of twenty-one or twenty-two, and I thought, I thought it was you, and some of these issues were, were still addressed. So, you know, I, I look at, I look at some of the reporting. I looked at there was fourteen sit-down meetings with subcommittees to address these concerns that two years later, we're, we're not getting there yet. That also tells me that the city does want to get there. They, they, they want to move forward and do that. So to hear Ross and, and your, and your team tonight say that you want to work with us, I, I really hope that that's maybe turning a new leaf or, or understanding that, that, that there is something here. I, I think there's something valuable here to go, just not at the sacrifice of forgetting about the specific plans that we have in place. As I mentioned earlier, I think that's one of the strengths of Temecula, is that we've, we've thought out the design. We've thought out all of the nuances for development because we want it to be successful. We don't just want to take this proposed hotel and just stick it somewhere just, just because it looks good or because we think we like it if it doesn't fit the requirements of everything that's been laid out. And I trust staff on those types of recommendations because that is the specific plan. That's what guides us. I mean, you had the book out, this, this is here. So if you're, if you're, what you stated earlier is true, let's sit down and figure out how to make this work. Because I, I do think there is a way to make this work. We just need to be on the right page and, and understand it. I appreciated hearing some of your comments also. Like the pool, for example, that was one thing I mentioned a few years ago. I personally thought the pool's too small for something like that. I remember Pachanga's first pool was way too small, like what they had to go back into. And I was like, really not understanding the location of the pool. Then looking and hearing some things today, you know, I could kind of understand. If I was the one hosting a wedding, and there's a bunch of splashing going on in the pool that's right next door, I probably wouldn't want that. So I, I understand that, and I think that's, that's where that dialogue needs to work and say, here's kind of what we're thinking, here's why, here's the reasoning, and then can we come back? And I'm confident that we can come back and say, well, here's really what we're looking for. And if we can keep those lines of communication open to really come forward and put, afford a, a strong product, I, I stand by it. Temecula will receive it well, and it will serve us very well, and it will bring a lot of business to our area. I go to conferences all over the country, we have nothing here in Temecula. This would be awesome to have something like this if it's done properly.
I agree with the pool comment too. I, something I meant to say was, I, I don't think that a wedding and, and the use of the pool are going to take place at the same time. So you have two different groups of people. I don't think they should be right next, next to each other. People at a pool, in many cases, they're having a lot of fun and a lot of noise, and that's not necessarily what a wedding venue, you know, particularly wants. So I, I, I agree with that part of it, so.
Okay, thank you to all my colleagues. One other thing for staff, I know Fernando has some things. I had a question on the wedding venue and parking for that too. Like that's extra parking, so that was a question I had on that.
It's not a requirement of the specific plan to provide parking for a wedding venue. Only the hotel rooms and the conference facilities. Wedding venue's not considered a conference facility.
Okay.
So it's the same as you have, like, existing restaurants in Old Town, not required to provide parking.
Yeah, well, that's kind of a big deal. Weddings come with a lot of people. Okay. One thing that Ross said, and Ross is a friend of mine, I like Ross. He said, make sure it's appropriate for Old Town. And I think that's, that's what we all want. We want it to be appropriate for Old Town, we want it to be right. We want it to look right. We want it to meet the standards, the city standards that we have, and all of that. Like Bob said, we need to cross those Ts and dot those i's, and, and then we come back. And I think this was too soon. So do we have a, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I agree with everything my colleagues have said regarding the applicant and staff. So I'm cautiously optimistic that what you've said is, 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 is from the heart and that you do want to work with staff to accomplish your project. And I think every one of us here on this panel would love to see a hotel. But as my colleague Linay said, it just doesn't seem to be quite Old Town yet. So I'm prepared to make the motion that we accept staff recommendation. And Scott, could you pull that recommendation up so I could phrase it correctly?
And then adding some other ideas.
Okay, I'm, I move that we make a recommendation of redesign in order to comply with the development standards of the Old Town specific plan.
And do we need to add in suggestions that Fernando made also?
If you want that to be part of the recommendations, as well as just incorporate what...
Other suggestions that were made.
Other suggestions, so that that would all be considered by the applicant in the redesign that's submitted for the next round.
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with including that. Can you state that?
Oh, I think we can just take it from the, that the redesign is going to incorporate planning commission's input.
Is there a second?
And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried. Thank you. I think we're done. We're really done. Thank you though. Thank you for your presentation and, okay. So, where are we? Okay, Commissioner Reports. That is where we are. Commissioner Reports? Do we have any Commissioner Reports? This isn't subcommittee yet, it's just Commissioner Reports. Anybody?
No.
Anybody?
No.
I have just a really meaningless side note. As I was watching our brush with tropical disaster on the national news and one of the correspondents was in Palm Springs and she came on and talked about the tropical storm and she actually said Temecula the correct way. And I was really, I was really taken because every time you call somebody on the phone, you know, they always say, you know. So she had been schooled properly on the proper pronunciation. So it gave me a little bit of a kick on that one. That's my report.
Your report?
I do have something I want to say. And we kind of mentioned it earlier, but I just want to thank staff. I really do. We've had some meetings that have been easier than others and we've had some pretty, you know, deep, kind of getting into the weeds, controversial stuff lately. I'm proud of the work that this committee has done, that this commission has done, but I wouldn't have the confidence I have to sit here without the reports ahead of time, the information from you guys ahead of time to better prepare me for the meeting so that when we are faced with these kind of decisions to make and recommendations to make forward, that I feel like I've got a full, complete picture. So I do want to thank you guys very much for the work that you do and helping prepare us and then just commend the commission here because we, I remember we've said we're going to be busy and some of these meetings have been busier than others and we've had some, we've had some work cut out and I'm proud of the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, we certainly have had some extraordinary things to deal with this year and without guidance and efforts by the staff, I don't think we would have gotten through it, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that on behalf of the staff. I know they work very hard, so that means a lot. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to have to say something too then, but I, first thing I wanted to say, because I know it's like so late, but first thing I wanted to say was I was so proud of our city for being prepared for Hurricane Hillary. I mean, I went, we went and filled up sandbags. We were ready and it's like, it was people's individual choice to be prepared. Because I told my husband, I was like, we need to like get some sandbags for our neighbor or this, and it was like, oh no, we're not doing that because they're like 50 pounds each and we can't carry them in our little car. So it was like a reality of people have to be prepared individually. But what I appreciated is that the city gave us the resource to be able to do that. And I have told lots of people that because I've had, I have family all over this country and I, you know, they're like, were you prepared? We were prepared. We were prepared.
Have you guys, have you guys met Michael Alfred, our city emergency manager?
He's like?
This is the best emergency manager on planet Earth. I'm telling you right now, and he's the most enthusiastic as well. So the city is always prepared.
That's awesome. Anyway, now if we can just get out of the city if something happens, that would be the question, but, but, but I also, I also do want to say I'm really grateful for staff. I, you know, I've been on here for nine years and it's been a learning curve for me and I have appreciated all the support that I've received. But also, as Adam said, we're prepared for these meetings. I mean, we have to read and study and do our homework, but if we have questions, they're answered. And we just, and I really appreciate my colleagues for taking the time and making sure that they're prepared for these meetings because it's important. You have people here that have taken their time to come out here and speak. They don't really understand everything because they don't have as much information as we do maybe, but they've taken the time to come here. And so it's important that, you know, we make them feel like that's the right thing to do and I hope that we do that in these meetings. But I do so appreciate staff and, you know, especially Luke and the time that he spends with me in making sure as chair that I am aware of what's happening. And Maricela, her support for sure, so that I don't do anything stupid. I was a little bit off, but anyway, close that public hearing, open it. So, anyway, we're doing great. This is awesome. Okay, so next we have subcommittee reports. I know we just had one today. Gary, do you want to?
I'll do the alcohol one and you can do the one today.
Okay, sure.
Okay, Laney and I met with, thank you. Laney and I met with staff on the issue of alcohol and its place in Temecula. And now I think that all of my colleagues here have been scheduled for a meeting to be briefed on our joint meeting. I think that's pretty much all I have to say is we didn't accomplish much in our, in our subcommittee meeting, but we knew where it was going.
Well, we got information.
So, yeah, we did get information, which you'll be getting, so there, and I wouldn't want to violate any Brown Act by going into any more detail on that, so. You'll find out more next week, I think, as we all are briefed on the issue. Is that okay, Luke? You okay with that?
Yeah, and I think having a combined meeting with city council, that's a first ever. So that's awesome and we're happy to be able to do that and, you know.
It's not the first ever, but it's the first since, I think, 2001.
I was going to say, first ever that I know about.
The issue was also liquor stores.
There you go.
So.
And we have some experience with liquor licenses, so. So then we had another meeting today regarding complete streets and for everyone, you know, pedestrians, bus, cars, bikers. And so that's going to be coming back to the, coming to the planning commission on October 18th. And they're putting together a policy, complete streets policy, that will just help engineers when they are building that they know, they have documents that they can go and look at and everything is kind of streamlined. I think that's the purpose of the complete streets. And Gary brought up having a little more focus on sidewalks and being able to finish those sidewalks. That was a great comment. And anyway, just having a complete streets checklist, so knowing what they need to do before they go build. And also, the comment I liked was, I didn't write it down, but like how do we reuse the streets? You know, is there a way to use them differently than they've been used in the past? And kind of looking at that, how can they be used better now that the city is evolving? Right? So anyway, I think it'll be a great thing and like I said, that will be coming back to the planning commission on October 18th. It'll go to public traffic and safety on October 28th, if you're interested in that. And then the city council on November 28th for adoption if all goes well. So that's, any other subcommittee reports?
If I can add one thing too, and the, the, my mind's blank now.
Landscaping of the freeway?
No.
Oh.
No, well, the complete street policy, our program, will be implemented and placed within the circulation element of the general plan.
Right.
So as they develop that, then it'll be incorporated and utilize all the other documents that we've had in the city that helped guide us in the traffic issue, circulation and that type of thing. So that's the ultimate destination for it, correct?
So the important thing was to get this done before they go and work on the general plan so that it's already done, right? Matt, we got it? Okay, all right. Any other subcommittee reports? No? Woohoo. Okay. What do we have next? Who's next?
Big wig.
The big wig?
King Luke.
King Luke?
I have nothing further this evening.
No?
No. I think enough has been said tonight.
You think enough has been said? All right, Ron, you're on.
I'll be very, very brief. We're going to hit a new phase in the French Valley Interchange Phase Two project. So you're about to see some CIDH piles start to be poured for the bridge and the flyover. So you're going to see some big cranes and so it's going to really impact people's commute, I think, the construction in the next month, so that's, that is happening.
That is happening.
Yeah.
All right.
So piles are coming.
All right. Thank you. We're adjourned until our next scheduled meeting, which is September 20th. Bada bean bada boom. Done.